This has to be changed.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mr. Reyes. As amended then, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved.
Item number one on Friday, April 17th, was a report from the Energy and Environment Committee recommending the implementation of shortage year water rates. Briefing the council on the committee decision, District 9 Councilmember Jan Perry asked DWP General Manager David Nahai for his comments.
In the committee meeting, we discussed a number of things with respect to the water shortage rate proposal, which included also some of the concerns council members expressed at the previous council meeting. We discussed the impact of water shortage rates on renters, the outreach plan to inform renters, property managers, the steps the department is undertaking to encourage further drought tolerant landscapes, the impact water shortage rates may have on low income and lifeline customers, and how they intend to inform them on how to cut their water use, and how they will update their records to ensure that they are receiving their full water allocation, impacts on businesses, and the need to conduct outreach. And those are just some of the general concepts that came up. I would appreciate it if Mr. Nahai could just give us a synopsis and a quick overview of where we are to date with the amendments and how the rollout intends to go.
This concept of the shortage year rates was first adopted by the Board pursuant to an ordinance passed in October of '07, but it was adopted by the Board of Commissioners on March 17th of '09. The City Council heard it on the 7th of April, reminded it to the Board of Commissioners. It was then heard again by the Board of Commissioners on the 14th, was reviewed by the Energy and Environment Committee on the 15th, and is before you here today on the 17th.
Questioning the when and how of the shortage year water rate program, District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn wants to know when the council originally voted on the matter and asks, "What's the purpose?"
One of the things I thought we could clarify, because I still think it's a bit confusing, is maybe you could clarify to us when these short water rates were adopted?
There was the ordinance that gives rise to the action before you today was adopted by the Board on October 2nd of 2007. It was then reaffirmed by the Board on February 8th of 2008. The LA City Council subsequently approved an ordinance with the amendments on March 22nd, 2008, that entered into effect on June 19th, 2008.
So these were not part of the 1993 recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Panel?
Oh, I thought you meant what is immediately before you today, the concept...
The short water rates?
Yeah, the shortage year water rates...
Where did this come from? Whose idea was this?
It was devised back in 1991, but it was never enacted.
Right, so we never voted on the short... This city council never voted on this short water rate structure?
On the shortage year rates themselves that are before you today, you haven't voted on them?
Right, so you keep referring to this 2008, 2007, like somehow we voted on that. These were...
No, Councilwoman, to be correct. This is the rate structure that was brought before you last year, and I believe you voted on it in April of last year, and it took effect in June of last year.
We voted on...
And the shortage rates are...
The rate structure for when we felt we were going to have a shortage was adopted in 1993. And tell me what the purpose of the short water rate are. Is that to raise revenue, or is it to conserve, to encourage people to conserve? What's the purpose of these, of this special rate?
What it is is a constraint of Tier 1. The primary purpose of it is to induce conservation, but...
So it's not to raise revenue?
Well, but there are additional things that happen when you do that, and that is that you do also reduce your revenue as a result of the additional conservation...
But what's the point? What's the point of putting in this rate structure now?
The point is that we now have, I mean, the debate on the water shortage is now surely closed. Everybody would accept that we have a water shortage. We don't have, we don't have the water to provide. So unless we buy it at a much, much, much higher rate from the Metropolitan Water District, and that would put us, if we're in that 10% bracket.
So we're hoping this rate will cause people to conserve and we'll have enough water?
Yes.
Everybody recognizes the need to conserve water, according to District 13 Councilmember Eric Garcetti, who says the shortage year water rates program is not about raising revenue for the Department of Water and Power.
For everybody who is listening and who heard that this is a raising of rates, if everybody reduces by 15%, 85% of people will see their rates go down. I'm holding the department to their word, as we all should, and I'm sure you're holding yourself to that word, that this is not a revenue generator. This is not about raising rates. 85% of people should, and we will work hard, and you will work harder to make sure people know how to do it, reduce by 15%. Any of us who have been experimenting with this, it is not too difficult to do. People still shave with their, or brush their teeth with their faucet flowing. People have plants that probably shouldn't be raised here in Los Angeles. People have their sprinklers going off during the rain. I had an email from somebody who jogs at 5:00 a.m., and he wrote me on my Facebook page and said, "What can we do? I see so many overflowing sprinklers as I run at 5:00 a.m. that nobody even sees because they're not up." Those sorts of things that our drought busters and others can help us with, maybe even by driving around at earlier hours, can get us to the place, and Los Angeles wants to be part of the solution. But if we don't do this today, we lose the summer. And this is not about, the sky didn't fall in the last week, but the sky has fallen in terms of the drought. It is here, and we didn't recover from it this year, and it'll be many years before we recover. Los Angeles showed leadership before by consuming the same amount of water we do now as we did 20 years ago. This is another moment for leadership. You will look back on this and say it's the right thing to do while we get better at the communication of it to make sure nobody is left behind in that struggle. Thank you.
So if we can please open the roll on this item. We're voting on the item as amended. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
9 ayes, 2 noes.
Thank you very much.
Joining us now is District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn. Ms. Hahn, welcome back to Council Week in Review.
Thanks, Jack. It's always good to be here.
Before we get on to the water rate issue, about the selling of surplus city property, is surplus really a good description of this property, and is this a good time to sell in a down real estate market?
Well, these are properties that the city of Los Angeles no longer uses for the purpose for which they were intended. We have old libraries, we have old animal shelters, other buildings that just aren't in use, so in a sense, they actually are surplus. And whether or not it's a good time to sell, it might not be, but the fact of the matter is, we're in a very difficult budget crisis. We have a close to a $500 million budget gap, and so we think that selling these surplus properties, even now, will help close that gap and maybe prevent some of the drastic layoffs that we're all hoping to avoid.
And of course, the question on the council floor was, where would the proceeds from the sale of surplus property end up? For now, it goes to the general fund, but there are exceptions, and some council members who still would like to see a 50-50 split with some of it going to their district.
Well, that's the way actually it used to be. It used to be if a piece of surplus property was sold in a particular council district, the council member put 50% into their own office budget, which they use to pay for additional services in their own council district, and 50% went to the general fund. But last year, we adopted a new policy that until June 30th of this year, all surplus property that was sold, we all agreed that 100% of the proceeds would go into the general fund to try to offset what we knew was a difficult budget year. So I've actually proposed that we extend that another year. Again, we all would like to have extra money in our own council districts to do things, but we're trying to all say we're in this together, we all need to share some of the sacrifice, and so I think 100% of all the proceeds of surplus property sold this year and next ought to go into the general fund to hopefully, again, prevent some more drastic measures that we're hoping to avoid.
Speaking of drastic measures, of course, the water crisis. You were discussing this week in council, the shortage year water rates. A year and a half ago, you were talking about putting all of the tools on the table. Now you've changed your position, it seems, a little bit.
Well, you know, a year and a half ago, I knew that we were going to face a water shortage. I was listening to the reports, I was watching the documentaries, and it looked like we were going to be in a severe water crisis. So a year and a half ago, I asked the Department of Water and Power to begin looking at ways to really encourage residents of Los Angeles to conserve. I talked about giving incentives for people to plant water friendly landscapes, and I also asked them to look at our rate structure, to see if it was fair and equitable, and people were actually paying for the water they were using. But now before us is the shortage rate structure, and I voted no on that today, because I don't think we've done enough to really get people to conserve water.
Do you think that the pure monetary incentive is going to be enough? Whether it's fair or not, obviously, that's going to be debatable, but you didn't sound very convinced during the meeting, as you say you voted against the measure that would implement these shortage year water rates.
Well, yeah, this was adopted back in 1993, when I think it was Mayor Reardon had a Blue Ribbon Commission that took a look at our water rate structure and suggested that in a time of severe water shortage, this rate would kick in, that basically penalized people for not conserving. We've never used it, we've never tried it, so today, it was proposed that now's the time, we should put it into place, and because of the financial penalty, it's assumed that people will use less water. I don't know if that's true or not. It's never been proven. Some people, you know, just pay their bill, and they'll say, "Well, we'll continue to use the water even if it costs us a little bit more." You know, I think there's other ways that we ought to be really encouraging people to conserve water, and I'm looking forward to us getting to the day when, you know, we're allowing people to only water once a week, you know, there's other measures that they can do to conserve water. I just wasn't convinced that this was the best strategy at this time to get people to conserve water.
As you know, a year ago, there was quite a bit of public participation in the process of dealing with DWP rates then. Enough public participation in this round of the process, for example, neighborhood councils?
Well, you know, we were hearing that there was not. We got a lot of complaints today and last week from people in the neighborhood councils, people around the city, who didn't really feel like there was enough ability for people to weigh in on this new rate structure. So I always think there's not enough outreach. I always think the public does not have enough opportunity to weigh in on the decisions that we make, particularly the neighborhood councils. There's an MOU that's formed between the Department of Water and Power and the neighborhood councils to talk about these very issues, and it didn't seem like that communication happened.
I guess the larger question is one that you just raised, and one that occurred, I'm sure, just about everybody else around the horseshoe, is, will the water rates actually be an effective incentive? And secondly, what else should we be doing? What if this is not effective?
Well, you know, I think we should have tried something a year ago. I think we should have been in our, we've got like Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4 of this whole strategy on how to get people to conserve water, but we should have started this a year and a half ago, and then we would have known at this point, do we still need to do more? And again, we're asking people not to, you know, water their driveways, we're asking them to cut the time of sprinklers, we're now asking people to water on two days a week, we're going to go at some point, I think, to one day a week. You know, the majority of the water usage in Los Angeles is for landscaping, and, you know, we've got to figure out a way to maybe incentivize people to not, you know, have these large green lawns, you know, all this landscaping that takes a lot of water. We also need to recycle more water, we also need to encourage people to use permeable pipes when they, putting in patios and landscaping, so when the water goes into drains, it actually drips down into the water table as opposed to out on the street. So there's ways we can do it. I just don't think we've done a good enough job of really teaching people how they can save water, which will save everybody long term, not only in the city, but really in the state of California.
Of course, a week ago, you were talking about hot zones and perhaps charging maybe a higher rate, but charging an actual rate for the exact amount of water the people use. I'm sure a lot of people watching Council Week in Review last week were saying, "Wait a minute, I thought that's what we were doing."
Well, it's not actually. Again, this Blue Ribbon Panel in 1993 decided to give a break to people who lived in certain parts of the city where the temperature was higher. It gave a break to certain people who had larger lawns and who had pools, and so we actually, they don't pay the same rate as other people. So really, other residents are subsidizing people who have large lands, landscaping, have pools, have hotter zones. I think maybe the time has come to really look at having people pay for the water they use. We do that with electricity, we do that with gas, we do that with every other commodity. When you use it, you pay for it, and maybe it's time to look at doing that in the city of Los Angeles as well.
A few moments ago, you referred to the Blue Ribbon Panel that Mayor Reardon put together, but you have also talked about creating a Green Blue Ribbon Committee. What would be their task?
Well, you know, I introduced that today in the city council. I proposed that we have a new Blue Ribbon Commission, a Green Blue Ribbon Commission, that takes a look at this whole idea of our water rates, the structure, who pays what for what, and more importantly, have them look at the idea of real conservation in the city of Los Angeles, what we can be doing better, how we can educate people more, and their task, in my opinion, is to come back to the city council and kind of make a recommendation on where we go from here with the rates and with conservation. It's 2009. We haven't taken a comprehensive look at this in over 15 years. A lot has changed in the city of Los Angeles. We've gotten, again, we've got a worse water crisis, I think, than we did then, and we have the emergence of neighborhood councils, which should play a big role as we go forward in determining some of these major issues for the residents.
To take the larger view, yes, we're in a water crisis. I think everybody agrees with you that this is the worst crisis, much worse than we had almost 20 years ago. Shouldn't we be taking the position of thinking up everything right away that might work and doing it all simultaneously, hoping that something will work?
Well, I can agree with you. I don't know why, really, we haven't just rolled out every possible way to conserve water. We're in a bad situation right now, and people are not, I think, truly understanding it. You know, some people will still brush their teeth and leave the water running. You'll still see a few people hosing down their sidewalk or their back patio. Sometimes people have leaks, and they don't fix them right away. So, yeah, I think we ought to do everything we can to, we probably should have started with the more severe phases of this conservation, kind of work backwards to see what would work before we increase new rates on the residents.
We haven't had a chance to talk to you in the studio in quite some time. What's been going on in District 15? What's on your plate right now? What's big, what's exciting?
Well, you know, there's always exciting things happening. The Port of Los Angeles, we're always still looking at cleaning up the air. We've implemented a very successful green truck program where we're banning all pre-89 trucks from even calling at the Port of Los Angeles. That will dramatically reduce the emissions that are in the air. Next weekend in San Pedro, we have the L.A. Harbor International Film Festival, where we're highlighting movies like West Side Story, and we're going to try to reach out to kids all over the city to have them come see that movie and talk about stopping the violence in their own neighborhoods. Two of the stars from that movie, Russ Tamblin and George Chakiris, who were the leader of the Jets and the leader of the Sharks in that movie, will be there to talk to kids and try and encourage them to lead nonviolent lives. So we hope everybody who is watching this will come on down to San Pedro next weekend, next Friday and Saturday, the 24th and 25th, and take advantage of this great international film festival.
And finally, something we talk about on this program this time of the week, how's the new video link between San Pedro City Hall and downtown working out for your constituents?
Well, I think it's terrific. It's very exciting for me to see people that I know down in San Pedro, in the Harbor area, you know, not have to come all the way downtown to have their voice heard, and just to go at the top of the municipal building there in San Pedro and speak live to the camera and have every single council member listen to their voice. I think it's very exciting. It's really the technology that exists that we should be using to take City Hall out to the people, instead of always expecting the people to come to City Hall. It's very exciting for me to watch, and for the very first time, at a major planning commission meeting last week in downtown City Hall, where we were discussing a project, a proposed development project in San Pedro, we allowed this video conferencing to exist, the first time it ever happened, so people could stay in San Pedro and tell the planning commission what they felt about this proposed project. So I think the uses are unlimited, and I think we ought to figure out ways that we can get people all over the city engaged in their government.
Sounds like a great start. District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks, Jack.
There really is a water crisis here in Southern California, and we must all do what we can to conserve water. For more information on what you can do, call 1-800-DIAL-DWPP. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 17th, 2009. On behalf of Wendell Ayala and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the aftermath of a disaster, you may not be able to rely on your knowledge of your home. You might also not be able to rely on your guide dog. The dog may be injured, frightened, confused, panicky, and/or disoriented. Be prepared to calm your dog and to keep it confined and securely niched and/or harnessed. If you use a king, remember to keep it readily available to assist you around hazards and obstacles. Keep a spare by your bed and at all exit doors, as well as a spare leash for the dog. Ensure that your guide dog is microchipped and that their license and identification tag have current contact information. Guide dogs can accompany you to an emergency shelter. Just as you need to prepare an emergency kit for yourself, you need to have one for your dog. Ensure you have enough water, food, any medications they may require, and a first aid kit. A blanket, a rug, and favorite toy may help calm them as well. Keep your veterinarian's name and number in the kit. Vaccination records may be required at the shelter. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family during a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for April 21st, 2009. We're in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m. for each city council meeting. We broadcast live on Channel 35 and rebroadcast in the evening. I want to welcome our members of the public that are here in chambers, as well as our viewers on Channel 35. And we also are available online for your convenience at lacity.org, and you can click on a link on the left side of our city's homepage and watch streaming webcasts of these council meetings, as well as archived footage of our past council meetings, also for your convenience. You can always use your telephone as well to listen into the audio proceedings of any of our committee meetings, as well as the full council meeting. That number is called Council Phone, and it's 213-621-CITY. Also at our city's homepage is our links to the city's council's agendas. Those are available online for members of the public, 72 hours in advance, or if you're not online, here in person, or in the city clerk's office. Special meeting items are available 24 hours in advance, and any of the items that are on the agenda are noticed for public hearing, though that occurs either in committee or here in the full council. If it's already received a public hearing in committee, requires a council member to reopen the hearing, but any item that has not yet received a public hearing will automatically do so. But any item that has not yet received a public hearing will automatically do so triggered by a card from the public. And if you'd like to be heard on any items, please fill out a speaker card in the back and hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms. We'll be sure to bring that into the mix. Also, we have time for general public comment, which is for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles. And if you fill out speaker card and just put "public comment" in the upper right corner, those two can be included in the council meeting. It's two minutes per speaker, and there is a clock there on the podium to help guide your time. I want to thank those members of the council who are here pursuing to council rules on time. Council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Labange, and Perry. We are awaiting five more members or four more members to constitute a quorum. We have three members excused today: Mr. Weisar, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Weiss. So if Ms. Hahn will please come down as soon as possible, Mr. Parks, if you'll join us as soon as possible, Mr. Rosendahl, if you'll join us right away, Mr. Smith, if you will please join us right away, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Zine. And those council members are now late, if they will please join us right away. We thank the members of the public for their patience in the meantime, and we'll begin as soon as we have a quorum of 10 members. Thank you very much. Thank you to council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Labange, Perry, and Smith. We are still awaiting two more members, and the following members are late. Council members Parks, Rosendahl, Wesson, and Zine. Parks, Rosendahl, Wesson, and Zine, please join us as soon as possible. If we fail to constitute a quorum in the next three minutes, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. We are waiting Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Zine. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval in a minute.
All right. Ms. Perry moves that, and Ms. Hahn seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Come in to tell your resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
If I could ask everybody to please rise for our pledge of allegiance. And Ms. Gruel, would you be kind enough to lead us this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. If everyone could please put their right hand over their heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flags of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. If we can run through the agenda, please.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 24 are items which public hearings have been held. There is a request to continue items 3 and 5 for two weeks to May 5.
Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing items 3 and 5? If not, we'll continue those till the 25th.
And, Mr. President, there's a request on item 17 to continue that matter 30 days to May 20.
All right. Any objection, colleagues, to continuing item 17 till the 20th? If not, let's go ahead and continue that.
And lastly, on item 10, the Energy and Environment Committee did meet this morning, but the report has not been submitted as of yet.
Okay, we'll hold that on the table till we get that report. And let's hold items 1, 2, and 4 as ordnances, excuse me, on the desk as well. We're still waiting for two more members. Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Wesson will constitute 12 members for our first reading. Mr. Rosendahl is here. We can click him in, and as soon as Mr. Wesson gets here, we can take that up as well. Special items... Yes, Mr. Labange?
Good morning, Mr. Garcetti.
Good morning, Ms. Labange.
Item number 24, continue it one day.
Okay.
High-speed rail.
There's no objection.
And call in special items 15 and 16.
Okay. 15 and 16 special for Mr. Labange. We will continue item number 24 without objection for one day. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, 18, I have an amending motion.
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl on item 18. Are there specials, colleagues? We can put the ordinances back on. We have 12 members now, Mr. Wesson. If there's no other specials, let's go ahead then, and please open the roll on the balance. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 25 through 43 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. On item 27, there is a request to continue that matter for two weeks to May 5.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas, did you want to...
Item 27, we can continue it till tomorrow.
One day.
One day.
Okay. Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Cardenas, no objection. We'll continue that item one day. That would be till the 22nd of April as well. Folks that are here for number 27, that will be continued one day. So, thank you, and if you'd like to come back for that, we'll hear that tomorrow. Ms. Hahn, then, Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I'd like item 42 to be continued until the 29th, if that's okay.
Okay. Any objection?
Even if it's not okay.
All right. And Mr. Parks?
Yes, I have to recuse on 25.
Okay, we'll call 25 special for cusal.
And, Mr. President, there's a request on item 41 to continue that one day to April 22nd.
Okay, there's no objection. We'll continue 41 for one day till the 22nd as well. And do we have cards from the public on any of these others?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on 25 that was already called special. 32, 34, 35, and 39.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public, and we'll open and close the remaining public hearings. Mr. Smith?
This is a presentation.
Okay, we'll call that special for Mr. Smith. And if there's no other specials, let's take the balance up, please. That's 26, 28 through 31, 33, 37, 38, 40, and 43. Okay, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved, and that will take us back to general public comment, which is for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city. Our first speaker is Dr. Clyde Williams, who will be followed by Oscar Johnson. As a reminder, we have a code of conduct there, and also two minutes for each speaker to help guide their time. And a very good morning to Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrow Road, El Sereno. We're selling LA. Whoever wants to buy parking, please do. And then we're also forming new citywide special assessment districts. Yesterday, the Board of Public Works approved the special assessment district for stormwater, which will do a very good thing, but will require the formation of a citywide special assessment district, which will have debt financing capability. What's the next step? Well, we could sell it off as a public-private partnership. We've sold off the parking. How about the parking districts? How about street lighting? How about stormwater? How about the CRA? I'd like to sell them, frankly. What are we doing? We are giving the way to the private industry and separating the relationship of the public, the neighborhood councils, and our city-elected government. I think this is wrong. We should be changing it to improve the communications at all levels, rather than isolating the primary budget requirements and making the people essentially servants of whoever is in charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Oscar Johnson will be our next speaker. After that is Philistoretti. Good morning.
My name is Oscar Johnson. Proactive, I speak for the oppressed, and I speak for culture change. We need to end corruption in government, end illegal immigration, end government waste. We need a fair and just government. We should seek for fair, truth, and justice for tomorrow, because if we don't, tomorrow will be the same day as today. We should protect the rights of all citizens. We should abolish the police department, abolish the FBI and the CIA. That's un-American government. That's not constitutional. We should strive for a fair and just government. We shouldn't have one race over another race in America. Our Constitution tells us we're all equal. But we have developed some what we call white supremacy in law, white supremacy in racism. We see that whites that ride the backs of black people for money in our law enforcement. We see millions of our citizens get out of jail yearly, and our government gives our representatives money to construct their lives, but they don't give our inmates, the ex-inmates, nothing in their life, no money to construct their lives. And so they're always going back into the environment they came from, or they will be excluded worse. We need to send condolence to the people of Palestine for the terror that Israel keeps perpetually burning them. We should strive for a fair government, a just government. We need to go in a moral direction. We need to cooperate with President Barack Obama. President Barack Obama told Mayor Vasquez in the last month's newspaper to strive for a job in LA and create more jobs in Los Angeles, and make our mayor be more accountable for what his actions will be. We should take the guns out of the police. They are going around shooting innocent people. If citizens shouldn't carry guns, the policemen shouldn't carry guns. We need support from Barack Obama. Indict Mayor Vasquez, recall Chief Brandon, and recall Lee Brock. Try to make Los Angeles be the first city in America to do something that's in agreement with the Constitution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Philistoretti is our next speaker. After that will be Arnold Sacks. Very good morning.
Good morning. Philistoretti, the Animal Issues Movement. If I'm not here tomorrow for the spain mutter vouchers, I just want to thank you so much for your support on this issue. I didn't get to finish Friday commenting on the sexual harassment settlement that you're going to be considering tomorrow, an item involving sexual harassment by alleged sexual harassment by Ed Boakes, the general manager of the Department of the Animal Services. This is in regard to Mary Cummins, who was a former volunteer and one of his strongest supporters when he came here, also one of the most vocal critics of Mr. Stocky, who was here before. I just want to say that whatever money is being spent as a result of Mr. Boakes' misconduct is absolutely disgraceful. We are talking about, and I'm not making any comment on the settlement itself, but we are talking about laying off employees of the Department of Animal Services who need to care for those animals. We do not have one shelter even open to the public. And that money that could be used to keep those employees on our payroll or to care for those animals is going to be spent to resolve a lawsuit for conduct that should not have occurred by a general manager in the city of Los Angeles. Secondly, I just dropped off a packet at each of your offices regarding requests by the Department of Animal Services for fee waivers at a time when we're in a real budget issue. I hope you will read it carefully, because I believe that Mr. Boakes and Ms. Barth have been less than ingenuous with you in regard to titling this issue, and you believe that it increases, that in fact it involves major waiver opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker, and after that is Chris Rowe.
Good morning, City Council, Arnold Sacks. There's been quite a contentious argument being played out in the city of LA through the editorials in the newspaper regarding the new police headquarters and the naming people want to call it Parker Center. You could name it Parker Center, but here's an idea. Why not put on the side of the building, spend a couple extra million dollars, to put his racist comments in bold letters so that when people go into the building, they can read his remarks about Mexican tribes and African monkeys? A real go-to kind of guy. People say that that was the department that he inherited. That's why it shouldn't be held against him. But if you wanted to watch All in the Family Today, the television program, it would create a public outcry, but it was a great program back in the '70s. By the way, did anybody, any of the council members watch the Boston Marathon that was held on Patriots Day yesterday? Also on television was the mayor on Sunday. Did anybody watch that? In his discussion with the newscaster from Channel 7, he mentioned that he was looking to get stimulus funds from the government to put more police on the streets. But if you've got $250 million in a garbage tax increase, garbage fee increase, who the hell is watching the books for the city? Stimulus funds for more police? Who's doing the accounting? When is it going to stop? And congratulations on your Friday discussion. Three hours of discussion regarding the DWP water increase rates, 10 seconds of voting. There was a lot accomplished. Now that they've got the money, we'll see in another six months for another increase because we need more. And finally, thanks for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Our next speaker is Chris Rowe. After that, we'll go out to Van Nuys, and Miriam Fogler will be our next speaker. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Chris Rowe. The LEDWP Neighborhood Council Committee should have a seat at the table when the LEDWP is before the council or the E&amp;E Committee. We need to be able to respond to the comments of the city council and the LEDWP. For example, Councilman Alarcon was speaking a minute ago about the million trees up at E&amp;E, and what we need is a million native species plants that are capable of offsetting greenhouse gases or for plants that are native species that will prevent water runoff and protect the ground. The language in the ordinance should be clear. It needs to be changed to state that automatic sprinklers are allowed to be two days a week, Monday and Thursday, but that we can use the handheld hoses daily. And finally... And finally, in terms of Mr. Smith, you talked about the Berkeley Plan. And what I recommend for that, for conservation purposes, is this, that we use the Berkeley Plan to fund insulation for our houses, for refrigerators, not just $100, but for big refrigerators that are old, for our furnaces, and for air conditioning units. That will save a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Our next speaker is Miriam Fogler in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Morning. I spoke to the union man, and let me tell you something. The people who you should be going after, if you want to go after, is the CRA and the developers. They're stealing the water, stealing the tax increment money that we need for our fire police. You don't need to go after a stimulus fund. By the way, Arnold Sacks, I know you're always, always on attack for state workers, but you should be going after the CRA. You should be going after DWP. They're making a lot more than made, 37% increase. You should be going after fire police for making one heck of overtime. And if you want to see cutbacks, you should stop the developers building in the city. They are killing our city. They're taking everything you have. Everything is going to developers and contractors through the CRA. They are using eminent domain to take away people's homes, and they're making more people poor. And I don't mean to be attacking poor, but God, if you're going to sandwich the middle class too with the rich, I might as well be on offense against the poor here. You people should be going out and getting jobs, middle-class jobs, like Antonio and this city council blabs about, getting hotel worker, hotel job, making $10, $11, $12 an hour, especially without no benefits. Then you'll say, you'll say what I mean. Oh, then the city workers have a right to have their benefits and their pay increases. After all, they have sacrificed. I'm paying on my medicine, for example, a $10 bottle now is $20 instead of 10. I'm saying five now 10. I've taken $18.7 for the benefits of the union here, the coalition. So the city has gotten concessions from the coalition. Now it's the city, it's the city going after water and power. Police and fire need to make concessions, and they also need to get rid of the CRA. We need to get rid of them. If you want to lay off 2,800 workers, get rid of CRA and all your useless departments that you've layered on top of the city and made it so hard for other people, for the essential departments to operate, and stealing the money. And that's what you want to do, is destroy and get rid of middle class here, and that's what you want to do.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Walter Bechtel, back here in chambers, is next. After that is Donna Perman, back out in Van Nuys.
Good morning. Thank you. I wanted to come back, and I wanted to say that I'm still working on the response letter to Mr. Sands concerning the Ford Hotel at 1,002 East Seventh Street downtown Los Angeles Somebody somewhere has told LAHD that they're not to pay attention to any more complaints about the Ford Hotel violations of state and federal law. We only have now one and a half showers that work there between, for 140 people. Just because CRA and HUD and SRO are overseeing a potential project, hasn't yet got funding from HUD, doesn't mean you're still not culpable to the state and federal laws. Somebody needs to explain to LAHD to stop fudging their inspections. One or two showers is not enough for the people that live there, please. And there's other violations, too. I'm sure we would all appreciate that LAHD be reminded that it's still the same as any other hotel until, from now until doomsday, as far as they're concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Donna Perman is next, and then Rick Nightingale, also in Van Nuys.
Hello, Mr. Garcetti.
Good morning.
Anyway, our daily news and L.A. Times are making accuracies about the city employees. So legal to make city employees give back their hard-fought raises, and the police and the fire get raises, and they're hiring more, and wire and power making all the money. Anyway, how is it the city employees are asked to make sacrifices for all of the city? How can only some of the city employees are asked to sacrifice? DWP is making more than other employees. They should be sacrificing more. Of course, the mayor won't ask our fire and police. Isn't our sewers just as important? Watch out for private employees. You'll be next. Mr. Garcetti said you care for the hotel workers. Why can't you care for the city employees? It's not fair. Some city employees are making only $25,000 to $30,000, and that's not enough, especially if they have kids. And yet you're asking to give more. It's a war on the middle class. The poor rely on the middle class, so you shouldn't be fighting the middle class. People are attacking middle-class and city employees. They don't attack the elected officials, people who get up here. How can you ask for sacrifices while still having some departments have a lot of overtime and hiring more police, while punishing others? We need to go for sacrifices to CRA, who take our tax increment money. We need to stop the developers who will take too, bill too much and take our badly needed water. Why don't you charge enough on digital billboards? And why don't you go after the top managers in DWP, like Nehai, and our mayor, and our city council, and their staff? 10%, if you cut back on that, on our developing, that would save a lot of money. So we need to stop doing this and stop going after city employees, because they're just hard-working people just like the rest of us. Go, stop going after middle class. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Our next speaker is Rick Nightingale, and after that is Michael Carrion, back here in chambers.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightingale. On this DWP thing, I'd like to know, you know, if you're, like I said, in the real world, all you people up there, that what happened to $30 million that the courts turned around, that you people were embezzling out of DWP for all those years, and finally, the courts said you can't do it no more? So where's this $30 million going that you people were getting and more, I believe? Because like a little piggy bank, you kept robbing the piggy bank to pay the bills, and now it's stopped. So that obviously affects everybody, because you're used to that money, and now you don't have it, and the way the economy is going, it makes it worse. So I don't understand that you turn around and have this DWP thing, and they vote on this. You don't try to consider whether, I'd like to see the paper or somebody say how much water of this gray water that you people are wasting going down the drain, that you could put into these parks, and you could turn around and put it into the golf courses and so forth. In the valley, I believe there's only one golf course, that's Woodley up there, that the gray water is even being used. And there's all kinds of other people that would love to have the gray water, but I don't see any plumbing. You're not trying to utilize it, you're just flushing it down the toilet. And I'm really sorry about all these other people, you know, you're talking about layoffs and so forth, but the only way is overhead, and that means people. I mean, this is your job? The cow has got out of the gates now? I mean, it's, there's just more money. All of a sudden, with all the property that, the taxes that we got before, and all that money that was going in, you thought that it would just keep on going, but the train has stopped. And it's up to you to turn around and get to a balanced budget. It's known as balance the checkbook. And you people aren't doing it. You're not facing up to it. You're thinking the government's just going to bail you out, just like everybody else thinks the government's supposed to support them. It's not that way. And Obama wants to turn around and get rid of the middle class, so are you people. That's what it's all about. You want to get rid of the middle people. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Carrion will be our final speaker for our general public comment. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Michael Carrion, and on my way to work again, there were over 62 police vehicles illegally parked, which Mr. Laban said he'd look into, but hasn't done anything about it. I keep repeating that, because every time I get on the subject, Mr. Laban says he's going to deal with it, but never does. If you want to save money, I work in Santa Clarita, in Castaig, and I see Los Angeles vehicles being driven all the way to Lancaster, all the way up north on our dollar. Why don't you just pass the city ordinance like most other cities? If you don't live in the city, you can't take a city vehicle home. The wear and tear on these vehicles are costing us money. The gasoline that's being spent is costing us money. But you're going to lay people off, instead of letting a few fat cats get fatter. They make over $100,000. Let them drive their own vehicles. There is no reason for them to be driving city vehicles. Take away some of these perks, and you'll save a lot of money. Every time you drive a car hundreds of thousands of miles, that car devaluates and it's not worth as much. All the wear and tear, gas, tires, everything that we pay for, has gone down the drain. But the mayor doesn't see that. He wants to take jobs away. He wants the people to give back something. You ought to take some of the perks away from some of the people that have all these perks. They come into the city, they park illegally, and nobody sitting here wants to have the courage to do something about it. They're afraid that when you call City Hall or you call LAPD to respond, they won't respond because you gave them a ticket for parking illegal. They sound like children. These are the excuses I get from parking enforcement, from the captain of parking enforcement. They can't do it because this city council has their hands tied.
Thank you. That'll be our last, yes, Mr. Laban?
Good morning. I talked with the office of the Los Angeles Police Department and arranged a discussion with the head of the Superior Court Judges on this issue. So I want to let the city attorney know that I'm working on it, and I'm not doing that. And as for that, remember Officer Dean, who was driving his motorcycle to respond to the tragedy of the earthquake, to respond and lost his life over the earthquake. They interchange his name for him. He may have lived out of the city, but he was responding to us. It's important to have a mobilized police force and city force. Thank you.
And I'm sure the city attorney appreciates the update. Thank you very much, Mr. Laban. With that, we have a request from Mr. Smith to take item number 36 out of order without objection. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. And if I could ask Lori Hughes to please come forward for a presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a big day in the city of L.A. to recognize 10 years of work that's been going on in our city. There are currently 36 BID business improvement districts that operate and provide services in all areas of the city, from Chatsworth on the north to San Pedro on the south, in Ms. Han's district. We have all been working very closely with BIDs in our districts for many years, and they've done a great job in creating improvements that enhance the community. BIDs are a vital component of the economic development of the city and the creation of new jobs in allowing businesses and businesses to survive, to thrive. BIDs across the city have organized an alliance, they call the Los Angeles Bid Consortium, and they work with the city to improve their services in respective areas and districts. It's important that we look at those today and realize that there's been 10 years of great work done. And with that, I'm going to turn over Lori, and there's a number of people here from the BIDs across the city, who are doing tremendous work to keep our business communities thriving and vibrant. And I think one of the greatest achievements I've ever seen is what has happened in the downtown corridor with the BIDs down here, and the incredible work they do to keep that community alive and vibrant and clean. So with that, Lori, the floor is yours, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Honorable council members, staff, and members of the public, thank you very much for allowing us to be here today to present to you our report and video presentation, The State of the BIDs: Why BIDs Matter. I am Lori Hughes, and I am the chairperson of the Los Angeles Bid Consortium. I am also the executive director of Gateway II L.A. Business Improvement District on Century Boulevard. We are so proud of the work that our business improvement districts have done, and we're here today to show you how much our efforts collectively and individually benefit the city of Los Angeles. On your desks, you have a report, the first we have ever compiled, which highlights the amazing work the BIDs have done since their inception in the early 1990s. Since that time, we have voluntarily paid over $220 million in assessments. Those funds, plus other resources from BIDs, have helped pay for safety, street, safety and security initiatives, street scape improvements, sidewalk cleanings, garbage collection, and recycling programs, as well as helped create marketing initiatives, information campaigns, and outreach efforts to bring people to our vibrant business districts. I am here today, but I'm joined here today by representatives of many of our business improvement districts from throughout L.A., and I'd like everyone to stand and be recognized by the council.
I think they're standing.
We are your partners in making this city great, and we're so happy to be here. Now, please let me introduce someone who is very familiar to you, Carol Schatz from the Downtown Center BID.
Thank you, Lori. And I want to first recognize the enormous job that Lori did. We came up with the idea. And herding cats is a, you know, concept we all know, but she had to pull everybody together and make sure that it all happened. There are a lot of us, and so she deserves special recognition for making it happen. I am very gratified to be standing in front of you today to join with my other colleagues, because we are indeed proud of the work we have done. I think downtown stands as a shining example of what happens when property owners take it upon themselves to tax themselves yet again above and beyond what is already required, which is not a small sum when you consider the city and county requirements and taxes that are paid, to create a vibrant community. And I think downtown stands as a shining example. I remember, I was working at CCA, many of you know, since 1990. I will be celebrating my 19th year in July, and downtown was effectively dead. It was pronounced dead in many publications. We had a nine-to-five downtown. People got out of downtown as quickly as they could. And no great city, as you know, can have a great downtown, can be a great city without a great downtown. We have created a 24/7 downtown. Our bid went into effect in 1998, so we've been on our 12th year. And I wanted to share with you some of the statistics that have, has resulted from what we have accomplished. And we accomplished this and other bids around the city. We're the biggest by budget, but all of them together accomplish the same kinds of, not consequences, but the same results that have an enormous impact on their communities. So remember, our communities, while they're commercial, think of the residential community we've built in downtown Los Angeles. We are helping our residents and our businesses. And if a residential or a commercial community starts to decline, it has an impact on every resident around it. So not including L.A. Live, we have created and presented to you $28.5 million in taxes. We have created $8.5 billion in revenues, and we have created 57,600 full-time jobs with our renaissance alone. And when you think about all the other BIDs and the improvements they've made to their communities, you can, it's incalculable. So I am very, very proud to be here with my colleagues to ask you to recognize what we accomplished, not just what your neighborhood councils do, but what we accomplished as taxpayers and putting extra safety and security out there, keeping the streets clean, things that we don't need to do, that are really the city's function. But we supplement what you do, and in doing that, we have created a much more vibrant city. And look at what's happened in Manhattan. The, you know, the mayor and the city council and others began that renaissance, but it was the BIDs in Manhattan that really started to turn New York around when they were having their difficulties. And so we're doing the great things here. If you've been paying attention, you would have known that. Mr. Laban?
I was paying attention the whole way.
My friend, Mr. Laban.
Whoa, wait, whoa, wait. I got my time coming up.
All right, you can talk later. All right.
We'll have some special time for you, Mr. Laban.
We are very pleased to be here, and it is my great pleasure to introduce Lorena Parker, Parker, excuse me, who's the executive director of the Studio City BID next. Thank you, Lorena.
Thank you, Carol. Good morning, everybody. As Carol mentioned, my name's Lorena Parker. I'm the executive director of the Studio City Business Improvement District. And in addition, in addition to all of the wonderful things that Carol has said about our economic impact for the city of Los Angeles, BIDs also realize that one of the most important factors for that foundation is safety and security. that foundation is safety and security. BIDs have, in almost all cases, put safety as their first priority and have expended many millions of dollars to provide security services to their districts. In 2007 alone, our members have spent over $10 million on security services. We also work in strong partnership with the Los Angeles Police Department to ensure that our streets are safe, our businesses are protected, and our customers and visitors feel a sense of security when patronizing our local businesses. Hollywood is a case study in how community revitalization is linked to public safety. Where the Hollywood of the late 1970s and 80s was a shadow of its former glory days, a sad haven for drugs and prostitution, today it's a glorious destination that shines in the eyes of the world, attracting millions of visitors each year. This formula has played itself out in many of our districts where urban decline had attracted crime. We have accomplished these changes in partnership with all of you, and that's why it's important for us to be here today. Also, I don't know if you guys have a copy of this, the Rand Corporation, in addition to the presentation, also has put out a reset. This was a three-year study that the Rand Corporation did on an independent basis, and they put out on the statistics of how Los Angeles, specifically focusing on L.A., how we have made a great impact on reducing crime within our areas. So right now, we want to show you a video, and this video shows why BIDs matter, not only to our individual districts, but to all the city of Los Angeles collectively as a group, and that's why we're here today. So let's go ahead and show the video if we can. Thank you. Two very prominent Angelenos, Ira Yohan and Bruce Corwin, approached me with a dream. They had a dream to restore the historic downtown corridor, Broadway, in downtown Los Angeles. And at the time, we didn't know quite how to get it done, but we had a three-year grant to start.
We first became involved in the Business Improvement District after it had been formed, but only comprised about six blocks.
The city made a commitment a long time ago to making the city better neighborhood by neighborhood. They feed a lot of money into neighborhood councils. They have the CRA doing redevelopment neighborhood by neighborhood. But the engine in every case is the businesses in that area. And these businesses have done an amazing thing by getting together and forming bids.
So I went to New York, Philadelphia, Houston, Denver, Seattle. The common denominator for their revitalized downtowns was this concept, the Business Improvement District. In the early years, it was just merely getting the opportunity to show the city what could be possible and the fact that people were willing, willing to write an extra check, to voluntarily pay a higher tax.
And I like to use the word donation as part of my works. All of the people in the area who have business enterprises, including the churches, have put in a donation to put up a fund.
We have a vested interest in the values of our property and the atmosphere of our neighborhood.
Now, it's always a good business decision to make the neighborhood better, to make neighborhoods safer. It's good for business, but it's great for the community.
The biggest problem in L.A. is that the city is 465 square miles, and some 45 communities that are all very independent and different.
BIDs are just like Los Angeles. They're just as diverse as our communities. They work in a partnership with local government to supplement the services that we provide.
Different BIDs offer different services. Some of them are heavily involved in marketing, some of them are involved in security, some of them are involved in the streetscape cleanup.
These are not the splashy things, but they are the nuts and bolts of keeping an area vibrant and functional.
Doing the graffiti removal, just on the street, picking up trash on patrol, on bicycle, that's just that presence of more people on the street.
Within the first year, we were able to decrease crime by 33%.
It allows the police to focus on the more significant crimes.
BIDs are probably most important in times of economic distress.
People see progress, they participate in progress.
We, in fact, can not only create public tranquility, but also stimulate economic development.
And I hope that we continue to get stronger and that we continue to see an increase in restaurants, continue to see an increase in entertainment venues. That brings more residents in, that brings more nightlife, more activity, and creates a stronger destination.
All of those things have economic impact. You need tourists, you need businesses, you need people to shop, you need schools to invest so that kids will come from all over the country to attend schools.
I think an important role that business can play is actually in business attraction and retention. Right now, our number one priority has to be to know our businesses and our communities, keep them there, help get them the support they need. The BIDs provide that kind of first line of defense. They're the first folks out there responsive to businesses who can then tell us at the redevelopment agency what kind of business assistance programs will make sense.
They fill a void created by a loss of revenue, thereby translating into a loss of possible services to the public, and they have been able to, you know, bridge that gap.
The progress we've made could not have occurred without the very active involvement and leadership. I emphasize leadership from the various BIDs and their governing bodies and the entities that support them.
Even at this juncture, we're still learning what BIDs can actually do, the kind of capital improvements they can provide, the breadth and scope of the needs of the city, and how private investment can roll in that.
Instead of blank sidewalks, we're walking under trees that are in bloom in downtown Los Angeles. You know, what a difference that is.
Our motto in the neighborhood, which fits into the BID, is that we are angels with one wing. We can only fly embracing each other.
And when people step up and say, "I'll pay on my own to make things better," how can the city councilman do anything but put on the cheerleader uniform and say, "Rock"?
This video has showed everybody how BIDs have affected and all of the city of Los Angeles and how we have made an impact. And now I'd like to introduce you to my colleague, Ms. DiWatsu. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorena. I'm Ms. DiWatsu. I'm the executive director of the Highland Park Business Improvement District. Another vital piece of the foundation upon which the success is built is making sure that our business districts are attractive and clean. While we invest millions to make sure the streets are safe, we are also investing millions to clean and improve those streets. In 2007, the Los Angeles BIDs spent over $6.4 million on street and sidewalk cleaning. We have spent millions on streetscape improvements like tree planters, garbage and recycling containers, curb cuts and cutouts, lighting facades, and improvement programs. We often contract these services with organizations such as Chrisless, and we are able to provide job opportunities to the economically disadvantaged and homeless. Together with the many city departments like sanitation, public works, DOT, and others, we have worked collaboratively to make our city more beautiful and to demonstrate that the business community cares about the local neighborhoods. And now let me hand it off to Lori.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Di. A city the size of Los Angeles faces difficult challenges in providing the types of services that businesses need in order to thrive, even when the economy is doing well. It is important for the city to know it is not left alone in these tough times. The BIDs will continue to be a committed partner. In good economic times, the BID model is used to revitalize an area in order to attract new businesses to come in. At the present time, the BIDs will work to sustain businesses and find ways to keep them afloat. We ask the council to have confidence in the BIDs and assist in making our role even more effective. If there is one thing every BID would like to see, it is better communication between the city and the BIDs. The consortium has identified four initiatives that will allow for better communication and foster a stronger partnership. First, early notification on public and private projects similar to the system set up for neighborhood councils. Second, the creation of a BID czar to coordinate directly with BID staff. Third, allowing the BIDs to provide monitoring and enforcement for the city in areas like illegal tree trimming, illegal vending, trash violations, and news rack and street furniture violations. And lastly, we request that the LAPD include a training module entitled Working with Business Improvement Districts Into Its Existing Community Police Training to Strengthen the Relationship Between LAPD and the BIDs. These four requests will strengthen our ability to create positive change and lead the way in developing sustainable business communities. We thank you very much for your time and look forward to providing you with more information on the substantial progress BIDs are making in our great city. But before we end, we do have a couple representatives from the city who would like to speak. We have Captain Blake Chow with LAPD, who's asked to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. You know, when I found out today that the BIDs were going to be here at City Council, I wanted to really make sure I came down here and just were able to support them in this endeavor. I've been, I'm the commanding officer of Central Area, and I've had the opportunity to be involved in downtown since 1992. And at that point in time, downtown was probably at its worst. I came back in 2003, and I'm back again as the area captain, and I've seen this amazing transformation that has really impacted downtown. It's becoming a residential, vibrant residential, vibrant business, and even changes in the Skid Row area have resulted in people being able to get the services and the help that they need that wasn't possible before. And really, the BIDs and the work that we do with the BIDs has really been key to this transformation downtown. Not only is public safety important to them, but also they take care of the quality of life issues that are also equally as important to downtown and creating this economic development environment where people are going to come here and shop and work and reside. The trash, the graffiti cleanup, the sidewalk cleanups, they help out with demonstrations, all these services they provide day in and day out that kind of just happen without any fanfare are things that have made this downtown area significantly much more improved than it was 14 years ago. What you're going to see downtown here with the BIDs that we have downtown, I think, is going to be a model for how we can communicate and share information with BIDs, the public and the private sector. We're doing some things like sharing information on websites about crime, where they have information that they can post, and we have information that we can put on there. And I think at the end of the year, what you're going to find is that this partnership between the LAPD and the BIDs that are downtown are really going to set the standard for how BIDs and public agencies should operate. So let me, it's my pleasure to introduce President of the Board of Public Works, Commissioner Cynthia Ruiz.
I was going to say, we have a beautiful card with her name on it. It's always a pleasure to have you in chambers. Welcome, Madam President.
Good morning, honorable council members, Council President Garcetti. I am honored to be here today to support the business improvement districts and the partnership that they have with the city of Los Angeles. It's all about partnership, 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 and the value of the clean and safe program that they bring to the city of Los Angeles is enormous. Give you a quick example, the Fashion Business Improvements in District Downtown Los Angeles, they pick up 30 tons of trash per week. 30 tons of trash that the city does not have the resources to pick up. So they bring a lot of value to the city. So I'm here to, this morning, to rise in support of the business improvement districts. I appreciate your time and hearing the state of the BIDs. And with that, I would like to introduce another city representative from the city attorney's office, Shanghai Maguta Armstead.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of Rocky Delgado in the office of the city attorney. Our neighborhood prosecutors know that the city's business improvement districts have always been the first step, been the first to step up to the plate and offer help to tackle a neighborhood's toughest problems, whether it's homeless patient dumping in Central City East, counterfeit goods in the Fashion District in Hollywood, illegal trash dumping along the Figueroa Corridor, graffiti vandalism in Canoga Park. L.A.'s BIDs have always been a tremendous partner in both preventing and responding to quality of life crimes that affect everyone. On behalf of our neighborhood prosecutors, on behalf of Rocky Delgado, on behalf of the city attorney's office as a whole, I would like to thank all of you for your successful partnership in the past and in the future. Thank you.
To all of you, thank you, and we salute you. We thank you for taking a leadership role. I can tell you, as a small businessman, you've done what we couldn't do before because as independent business people, we wanted to create better business neighborhoods, but couldn't do it without these kind of BID activities. And the consortium's been a great leader and exchanged great ideas. I want to share with you, one of your requests was you wanted a BID czar, if you will. Today at 2 o'clock in my committee on jobs, we're going to have a proposal to create an Economic Development Department for the city of L.A. It's amazing we don't have one, but that would be the place to put that kind of a person that would work with BIDs to bring economic and job growth, economic development, job growth to the city of L.A. And so that will be at 2 o'clock today. We hope we get your support. Thank you again for being here. God bless all of you. Go back and clean up the city some more. We appreciate every BID. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can certainly stay standing, or if you want to take the seats, we have five speakers on the queue from the council. So I'd like to call on Ms. Perry, the star of the video, Ms. Perry.
Oh, no, no. I was not the star.
Very nice lighting. And after that will be Ms. Gruel, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Labange, and Ms. Hahn. I should say, co-star with Mr. Smith.
I needed more infill lighting, though. I remember what life was like before we had the BIDs, and it wasn't easy, and we couldn't satisfy our constituents. And we couldn't keep up with what was going on out there in the communities. And then the BIDs came along, and they extended our reach, they extended our grasp, they enhanced our ability to serve the constituents and to improve our communities. And what I said on the video was just a small snippet of what I think, which is they've basically transformed the landscape of our city forever. And while I know that at times self-governance is extremely difficult, I think it's been a good and profound experience for all of us, and I just want to express my gratitude and say thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you to so many of the people who have made BIDs a part of Los Angeles. We've been lucky in Studio City, we see the benefits on a daily basis. And in the midst of right now doing a median on Ventura Boulevard that's being constructed with the leadership of the BID and the improvement in neighborhoods, and you can't come downtown without seeing the purple people out there supporting us, and it is a shared partnership. And we know when there's an environment in which people feel safe walking down the street, when they see that greenery and the openness, and more importantly, the community that has come together. I feel that it's been a great part of Los Angeles, and it is, you know, the language of today or the new words, a shared responsibility. And I think that's what we see in the BIDs. It is a shared responsibility. We both benefit from the establishment of the business improvement districts. And I know there are a lot of things that we can continue to do to make that relationship even better. But I want to thank all of you for your efforts and those that came with to support. This is something that we'd love to see expand in other areas, and you are ambassadors to other parts of the city to say, "It works. There is a return on your investment," which I think is so critically important here in Los Angeles. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for bringing this forward. It really is a great part of Los Angeles. I have two, even just outside of Sherman Oaks, but I feel like it's still my part of my district. I represent everything outside of Ventura Boulevard, but Sherman Oaks and Studio City have been a great example in my district of how important it is. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I also stand to look at these four great ladies that are obviously providing leadership that is great for the city. Lori Hughes represents the Gateway BID. We have our love and our problems. She strongly defends the members of the BID, and she's a great leader on that level. I got to tell you that there are three BIDs I'm looking at creating right now, one on Abbott Kenny. We're either going to have a BID there, or the business association will continue, but we need to get the folks who own the land involved in it. We're looking at another one on Venice Boulevard from Sepulveda down to Wal Grove. There's a whole lot of great energy there. We put together a farmer's market at Grand View in Venice, and it's thriving. Mar Vista is very proud of its community, so we're looking at putting that together. And the one that's moving the fastest right now is on Lincoln Boulevard in Manchester on one side by Otis College, all the way to LMU. There's a tremendous synergy building there. The more people involve themselves and determine their future in their community, the better it is. Indeed, I went back to New York, and I looked what they did on homeless issues, the BID on 42nd Street. Got a lot of things going, including permanent housing with supportive services, and have demonstrated that social commitment is as important as economic and business. demonstrated that social commitment is as important as economic and business commitments. So I want to thank Greg Smith for his leadership, and I want to thank you all for moving forward on creating these bids. Bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange is next.
Good morning. Thank you all for the bid. I want to first thank the city clerk's office. City clerk's office, where's Holly back there? Come up here, Holly. And where's Glenn Robinson? It's the clerk's office, so important. And Julie, I want to thank you too for being a good clerk there. Also, I want to say too, historically, in 1978, there was a great transformation in taxation. Prior to that time, there were 274, what we called trucksters. They were the gentlemen who drove a little motorcycle with a broom and with a bucket in back of the motorcycle. I drove one of those in 1974. And all that got wiped out with the restructuring of how taxes were collected. And then this great concept called bids came up. And Estelle, your work early on led the way. It was good to see you in the video. And many of you right here standing are people that I worked with over the years. It absolutely makes a difference in the lives of our community, and not just the decisions that are made here in this chamber, but the work in the neighborhoods by bids have made places that someone cares about the neighborhood, someone cares. And that truly has happened in downtown. It's happened in Hollywood, and Kerry Morrison has done a great job up there in Hollywood, also in Las Felas. I got to mention Largavon Village, NoHo bid, and the Sunset bid. All is very important to the aspect of what goes on. I pledge our support from my office, which all the council members support. It absolutely makes a difference. And Carol, I was listening to you the whole time, and the reason why, the reason why it's so important is that the bid stepped up when we couldn't. And if we didn't step up, and it's not taxes, it's an investment. It's an investment here that's so important because I thank all the workers who are behind you. If you just slide over, Carol, move a little there, right there. I just want to thank each and every one of them. Could we see them do a great job? And Captain, good job there. But it all starts with the city clerk's office, and I want to give them another hand for their work there in the city clerk's. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for your leadership in Hollywood because it has made a difference in that bid up there. I would love to say we could do it all, but we need partners. You're a partner, and it's a great investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom Labange. We appreciate your comments. As always, our next speaker is Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you. Well, I just also wanted to say what a great opportunity this was to have this presentation so that all of us here, and particularly people on Channel 35, could be watching what bids are and how important they are to the City of Los Angeles. And, you know, Carol and the Central City Association, you do so much, it's sometimes you forget that really you're a bid. And you have become such a great organization, really improving not only the neighborhoods of the bid, but really the whole City of Los Angeles and many of the outreach programs that you do. I, of course, have a couple of really good bids in my district. Wilmington bid is really very active and has totally improved the downtown of Wilmington. In San Pedro, we just changed to a property-based bid, so we're now a P bid, and made such a difference in downtown San Pedro, particularly with the security aspect. And that makes such a difference for people. In fact, I was told of just an incident that happened that the P bid security was observing a video camera and actually saw a tagger on the video camera. And then, when they were doing their routine patrol in downtown San Pedro with our LAPD senior lead officer, they actually recognized the tagger. And with the help of LAPD, they confronted the tagger, a scuffle ensued, but an arrest was made, and it found out that it wasn't just innocent tagging, this person had a gun. So this was a great opportunity to catch somebody who had committed a crime, but more importantly, prevented a more serious crime with that person, you know, shooting and maybe killing someone. So my hats off are to all the bids. And it is true, I mean, government cannot do it all. We just can't. And in these tough economic times, we're going to find more places where we cannot do it all. We need partners, and the bids all over the city are great partners, and instead of just complaining and cursing the darkness, you've lit a candle. And that's what we need more of in the City of Los Angeles. So my hats off to all those who are willing to tax themselves, are willing to do the hard work. Ultimately, it makes for a better LA. And I was pleased to second a motion where we are asking the planning department to include bids in their early notification like they do with neighborhood councils. And I think all your recommendations this morning were ones that I think we can all embrace and hopefully will make happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. And our last speaker is Mr. Dennis Philip Zein.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and to all the bid people. How many bid people in the chambers? Can we stand up? I didn't see him earlier. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you very much. I see Canoga Park bid way in the back. Mary, good morning. The early morning walker and the park on, Lanark Park. But to the bids, and Carol, I know that you're like the champion, but there's champions all over the city. We don't have a lot of bids in the San Fernando Valley, but I think as the time goes on, more businesses will understand the significance of a bid. And I know the great work that's been done. When I travel downtown, it's clean, you got your security people, you got your folks that give direction. Long Beach has a wonderful bid, and all over, it seems to be spreading. And I think that if we had the resources, we would be able to not take the dollars out of the business folks that are paying for the bid, but do it with government money since obviously we don't have that. So it's become a necessity for the businesses to thrive and do well. But I want to acknowledge the bids that are here, that are represented, and let you know that hopefully someday we'll have the resources to help the bids. I know the Police Department wants to help. Many of the bids have their private security forces, but all those issues are really the responsibility of your local government, but because of costs and because of funding, you've taken upon yourselves to maintain the business corridors in such a wonderful way. So congratulations to all the bids. I know that the choir has been singing praise to you, and I'll continue singing the praise to the bids. And other businesses out there that are listening, they should all join the bids because we can improve the quality of life business-wise throughout the entire City of Los Angeles. So to all the bids, thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much, members of the council, and thank you to our fantastic bids, and thank you for the kind words about Hollywood as well. We're four bids strong and growing and looking forward to, there's two or three others under study right now. So thank you for your fabulous work, and thank you as chair, Mr. Smith, for your very good work as well. Mr. Parks has an introduction, and then Ms. Perry has an introduction. And I see a sea of beautiful red out there, so I think Ms. Perry's going to tend to that in a second. But Mr. Parks?
And, Ms. President, just for clarification, on 36, that was a note and file.
Yes, let's go ahead and, without objection, note and file that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are visiting with us today a group of young people from a variety of schools throughout the city, but they're part of the LA County Assessors Office that bring their child to work today. There's 21 young people and six adults, and we just asked them to stand and wave. If they haven't, there they are in the back. And they're here with Mrs. Juanita Akins, who is their supervisor.
Well, thank you and welcome very much to our young and future assessors, future taxmen and taxwomen. And with that, Ms. Perry, for a very special introduction as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I know that Jackie Dupont Walker is, she's over here, a friend of many of us here in the room. And today is Delta Day in the City of Los Angeles, and I'd like to ask all the Delta, Sigma, Theta sisters to rise and be recognized.
Yay! Great, 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 great!
I believe we have 13-plus alumni chapters in the County of Los Angeles. Is that right, Dr. Dupont? 13? All right, 13. In LA County, and they are here today on their annual visit to Los Angeles City Hall to learn more about their local government and how it operates. And they will be here for a while in the council chamber, and then I think you're going to adjourn to the Spring Street forecourt. And all of you are encouraged to stop by and say hello, and thank you for coming in today.
Yes, Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, I just want to say, the reason I shouted, "Great, great, 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 great", last time you were here, all of you from the 11th District, from the Westchester area, throughout the district, came to visit me, and I just want to tell you, you're great. Your commitment to community means a lot to all of us. God bless you all, and welcome to City Hall today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. It's a great pleasure to see you all here today. Let's go ahead and take up the next item called special, Mr. Clerk.
And that was item 10 being held for the committee report, which now has been circulated.
Okay. Does anybody wish to talk about 10? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 15 called special by Councilmember Labange.
Tom Labange, number 15.
15 and 16 together if the department could be here.
Okay. Without objection, let's take 15 and 16 together then.
Thank you, Mr. Members. I want to say something nice about our councilmember, Mr. Parks, in his former role as chief of priest. Right before this vote, we had a press conference in Vermont and Wilshire and got Prop Q passed just by a little bit, but we got it passed, that allows to do us. And over the leadership of many, we've had salary savings, not a salary savings, a savings of program. Give us a little quick report here.
Melissa Krantz, Office of the CAO. In March 2002, voters passed Proposition Q, it's a $600 million bond measure for the construction of new police stations and new emergency response facilities and the renovation of existing police and fire facilities, thanks to program savings. We have about $81.5 million available for additional work, and that additional work requires mayor and council approval. I can give you the status of what's been completed, or we can go on for the new projects.
Well, the $81 million, how much is still hanging out there?
All $81.5 million is hanging up.
And is it already committed?
It's not committed until mayor and council approve addition projects.
But I mean, we're not, that's not item 16 that's going to take up the 81?
Oh, I'm sorry. Item 16 is the amending contract that's necessary to do the work. What we have are on-call contractors to assist the Bureau of Engineering with the design for these proposed renovation facilities. This would extend the contract by four years and add approximately $7 million to the contract ceiling. The work, however, is on-call, so it's as B O E needs assistance.
Right. Well, I know there's been tremendous work, Mr. Garcetti, by many, and some have come before, some are here now with the new Mission Station, the Topanga Station, the Olympic Station. There's a concept that you and I share to try to create a Northwest area. And Mr. Brennan's a Northern Leaguer from Eagle Rock High and many other places since trying to get a better facility for Northeast. Explain that in number 16. Hold my time, please.
For, as far as the renovations for Northeast, the department does wish to replace that station as well as create a new Northwest Division in response to the Cosmat study that was done on the police facilities several years ago. It included adding, as you mentioned, the Olympic and the Topanga Stations. A Northwest Station was also recommended, and two additional stations in South Bureau. At this point in time, the, under Prop Q, all of the stations that were not built under Prop II, we got a new North Hollywood Station, a new Newton Station, a new 77th. All of the other existing stations were renovated under Prop Q except Northeast, as we were trying to figure whether or not we were going to be able to replace that station at this point. Given the situation we're in right now and the horrendous situation that we have at Northeast, we feel that it's necessary to do a renovation until we can get to a point where it can be replaced.
Northeast is an old photo lab on San Fernando Road, and it's not a public building in the sense of the true dedication to engineers like to make public buildings on that. Let me just ask a question. What we approve here, if something happens miraculously in the next six months, could that change? Are these contracts that we're letting today, the $7 million renovation, or what is this approving?
Well, the contracts don't oblige us to complete a project. However, we spend Prop Q dollars and then we abandon the project, we would have to restore that funding to Prop Q.
Right.
What we had done is we initially investigated the idea of doing a new Northeast Station. However, the available funding is not sufficient to address PD's other priorities, which includes the existing Academy Project and the idea to renovate Rampart Area Station for Metro Division. So based on the limited amount of funds, without having to require and to kick in additional funding, this is what we propose in order to address all of PD's immediate facility needs.
Right. The Hollywood Community Redevelopment Agency is working with you, whether you know it or not right at the moment here, to identify a location in East Hollywood that would separate the Northeast area to what it would temporarily, we call it Northwest Division, and take part of Hollywood and take part of Rampart, whatever the case may be in that. We should look at that. Also, the prices of land now are very dropped significantly where there may be an issue that we could pick up land. I would also hope too, and Mr. Rosendahl, we've talked about this, to create a new West LA Division, because West LA is your largest regional area. And I know Ms. Hahn would like to see, if it's possible, a Wilmington Division, and I know you've got New Harbor coming up this weekend, but to be smaller and more able to serve the community. So I'm going to approve this, but we're going to see each other soon, all three of you. And we're going to look at this with the CRA to see what we could do in Hollywood to help expedite this opportunity to serve the people better. And at the same time, too, to my colleagues who get serviced by the Northeast, I think it would be appropriate one day that Northeast area go back to Highland Park off of San Fernando Road, somewhere near Eagle Rock Boulevard, and York, so it could better serve that community as it is. I thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your leadership. Thank each and every one of you. And tell Detective Sergeant Ito that we are, make sure that she gets briefed earlier on that from the councilman of the fourth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Ms. Hahn?
I was just going to see if we could reconsider.
Okay, after this one, okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll on 15 and 16, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Ms. Hahn wants to reconsider item 10?
Yes.
Okay, if we can open the roll, reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. That is back before us. Ms. Perry, did you want to say anything on this as committee chair? Ms. Perry, do you want to say anything? Number 10 is before us. Now, we'll recognize Ms. Hahn.
All right. Take, cut off your cards.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Ms. Hahn?
Is there still somebody here from the DWP?
I see Mr. Nahai right there.
We didn't do 10.
Yeah, and 10 just went through.
Why didn't you do 10?
I asked if anybody, we had it before us, it was called special, and nobody?
I think, you know, I mean, I think it's just an opportunity, I mean, I think it's a pretty big deal that we're implementing Phase 3 of our water conservation effort, and I think it would be an opportunity, at least for the public, to understand what Phase 3 is. So, Mr. Nahai, would you like to come and? Yeah, I was, I'd left the room briefly, and I came back, and I couldn't believe we didn't have 10. You guys were all here, you didn't like asking questions. So if you could hold my time, and, Mr. Nahai, would you just explain to us and to the public exactly what we're doing here with the implementation of Phase 3?
Great, I'd be glad to. Good morning, Council President Garcetti, councilmembers. My name is David Nahai, and I'm privileged to serve as the general manager and CEO of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. In light of the vote that was taken, the other representatives of the department who were here with me today for this item are no longer here, so I will attempt to respond to any questions that there may be myself. Phase 3 arises out of the Water Conservation Ordinance that was approved by this council last summer, last June, and entered into law in August of 2008. What the Water Conservation Ordinance does is provides for a number of phases, depending on the level of water shortage. Phase 1 is already in effect, and Phase 1 contains 14 prohibited uses, which have been, I think, well-publicized, and I'm happy to talk.
I don't think they've been well-publicized, so why don't you tell us again what Phase 1 14 prohibitions are?
Okay. I won't be able to recite all 14 of them, but there are mostly prohibitions on what would consider to be...
So you don't know what all 14 are off the top of your head?
You know, I can see if I have it here in my materials, but I can tell you generally what they are.
Okay. I think that's my point. If you're having a hard time knowing what they are... the general public probably definitely doesn't know what they are.
Well, no. I'm just saying off the top of my head.
Correct.
But let me read them off to you. Okay. Water leaks cannot go unattended. No outdoor irrigation between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. No outdoor irrigation that results in excess water flow leaving the property. No outdoor irrigation during rain events. No outdoor irrigation with standard sprinklers for more than 10 minutes per station. No outdoor irrigation with rotating sprinklers for more than 15 minutes per station. No large landscape irrigation systems without automatic shut-off rain sensors. No watering of hard surfaces, sidewalks and driveways.
No watering of hard surfaces.
With decorated fountains have to have a recirculating system.
No watering of hard surfaces.
No installation of single-pass cooling systems in new buildings. No installation of non-circulating systems in new commercial laundry facilities. No car washing with a hose unless an automatic shut-off device is attached. No water served to customers in eating establishments unless requested. Hotels and motels must offer guests the option of no daily towel and linen service. And no installation of non-circulating systems in new conveyor car washes. So those are the existing prohibitions.
Those are Phase One.
That's those are Phase One.
And how long have we been in Phase One?
As I said, the Water Ordinance was enacted, entered into law last August.
Last August.
Yep. So it was whatever time was taken.
And how have we done in Phase One?
I think we've done quite well. It's not just Phase One. It's all of the other efforts that have been made to raise consciousness about the water shortage. So we're seeing across the city right now over the last two years since the mayor started to encourage voluntary conservation and you, a year and a half ago, as you've stated, raised the alarm as well. I think we've done quite well across the city. We're seeing a 5% reduction in some sectors, much better than others. In the governmental sector, for instance, we've done really a superb job. Wreckin' Parks down during the last year by 20%. So we've done well, but we're not there.
Right.
And in light of the met rationing.
What would you have liked to have seen in Phase One for a citywide reduction?
You know, I can't judge that. I mean, you know, because the drought that we face is an ongoing and evolving situation. It just hasn't got better.
Right. But we've got like six phases. We're, we're, one, don't we have six phases?
Yes, but we're only implementing Phase One.
I know. I know. But that's our strategy, basically. So it seems to me we should have some benchmarks. And I would think you would have something concrete that you would have liked to have seen in Phase One.
No.
So we know where we're at and how we're doing. Because, you know, I mean, those are a lot of 14 recommendations. And I think I would have liked to have seen more than a 5% reduction with all those in fact. And I'm trying to find out what's, so what's not working? Are we having, what happens when somebody is violating these, for instance?
Okay. Let me get to that for a second. In a second. But again, this isn't the only strategy. The shortage year rates.
But it's our, yeah, which, as you know, I'm not a fan of.
Well, I know. I know you voted against it.
I did.
But these are.
But this is our strategy. Our six phases is our big strategy for reducing water usage in the city.
Yeah. Well, would you mind if I don't characterize it that way?
Okay.
As the big strategy? Because there are a number of strategies in order to encourage behavioral change. And then there are a number of strategies in order to take care of the long term.
Okay. So this is one strategy, not a big strategy?
It's one strategy. You know, so how does this work? One takes a look after a while and sees, what have we done? What is the drought? What is the water supply situation? Do we need to go the next step? And what we're saying is, what we're recommending to this honorable body is not only do we need to go the next step, we actually need to leapfrog Phase Two and go to Phase Three.
Yeah. Why don't you talk about that? Why we didn't? And obviously, we need to go the next step because Phase One wasn't as successful.
No, I wouldn't say that.
You wouldn't say that?
No, I disagree with that.
I would say that.
I think it's been successful in that we've reduced water use, you know, 5% across the board. Now, had the drought situation not worsened, had we not had this 10% cutback?
So was this totally, this was a surprise to you?
No. No, we've been anticipating for quite some time. This is why this issue of Phase Three, you know, our board.
Seems like it caught you unaware because we know we need to leapfrog from two to three. Like, what happened to two? Why didn't we go into two?
Well, the difference between three and two is the two restricts outdoor watering to two days, to three days a week.
Right.
Phase Three restricts it to two days a week.
Right.
So what are we doing here? We're aiming high in order not to fall short because we cannot afford as a city to fall short here. If we stray into what I will call the, for want of a better phrase, the prohibited zone of the met cutback, we'll have to buy water twice and in some instance, quadruple the prices.
Right. No, I agree with you. I know we're in a water shortage. I understand the financial implications. I just don't feel like these strategies are getting us where we need to get to. And we need to find out why not. And I suspect part of the problem is most people do not know that we were in Phase One. Honestly, I don't think people knew we were in Phase One. And, you know, we gave out 1,400 citations. You know, how many?
No, actually, just to make sure the numbers are correct.
No, excuse me.
We've responded to something like 5,400 calls and we've actually issued, I think, 27 or 2,800 citations. But.
Okay. My notes said 1,400 warning citations.
Well, I mean, your notes, I think maybe.
Which, how many customers do we have?
On the water side, about 680,000.
600,000.
Yeah.
And 1,400, I mean, you can see where I'm going with this.
1,400 is the wrong number. But let me say this.
I just know when I do my morning walks, I can just tell. People are still, you know, watering, you know, on, the water's running. I think there's a lot of people that probably have leaks in their faucet. I mean, I just feel like this isn't getting us where we need to go.
I think this is why the shortage year rates and publicizing them as well is so important. But I think that one telling fact is that with respect to the 2,800 citations that were issued, council member, only 50 of them were second level. Only 50.
What does that mean?
Well, the first level citation is only a warning.
Right.
There is no penalty attached to it. Then if it becomes a second level, then there is a fine. A third level, a larger fine, a fourth level.
And how many fines have we given out?
I'm saying there have only been 50.
50.
Right. So out of 5,400 calls investigated.
Right.
2,800, 27, 2800 citations issued, only 50 were second level. That means that the other 2,650 or 2,750 people, all they needed was to be told and they changed their behavior. So what it is, I mean, the reason why this is a good conversation is because you're helping exactly right here with Channel 35 and the audience to raise that awareness so that people become ever more aware of the fact that we're in a water shortage, that we have to.
Right. And frankly, which is why I am disappointed that we didn't do Phase Two. Because again, it helps people understand we're in Phase One, now we're moving to Phase Two, we're still experiencing this water shortage. And then today, we're implementing Phase Three. Again, because I don't think anything happened that we did not know or we were not aware of. And again, it gives the public understanding that we're moving in a direction.
Well, I think the message to the public, you know, you may only water on, you know, on Monday, Thursday and Saturday, or you may only water on Monday and Thursday, is probably the same message. We just need to get it out there. But here's what I would submit for your kind consideration. If we do that and we miss the mark, it becomes terribly expensive. And it becomes terribly expensive for all of us.
Right. Which is why I wanted to do all this, colleagues, a year and a half ago. Year and a half ago, we should have done Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. And then at the last resort, we should have began increasing people's rates because they weren't complying. I don't like the idea that we're short-circuiting or leapfrogging this idea of water conservation. We need to be straight with the public about the crisis we're in. And then again, I would like to have you get a better handle on what do you want to see from these phases? You've got to have an overall goal of what you would like to see us accomplish through these phases.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Or otherwise, the city as a whole is not going to be partnering with us in saving water. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Mr. Labange. And he'll be followed by Mr. Zion and Mr. Rosendahl.
I am very interested. A water broom's legal.
Yes.
So you could take a water broom, connect it to your hose, and you could clean a surface of your property?
Yes.
Okay. So that's important. And we should tell people what a water broom is. Could you explain?
Well, go ahead, council member.
It's a very, it's a contraption. It has a very high-pressure water that will come out, but not a high amount of gallons. I'm not explaining it as well as one of your engineers. Or I don't know if any engineers are out here. Mr. Herb was here earlier. Excuse me. But anyway, you know what a water broom is? Right. It's a water broom that you, it's a handle that you put on your hose that has intense spray, but it restricts the flow. It's created so it goes out. You're an engineer, but you're on the power side. That's good. Thank you very much. Okay. So water brooms. Let me ask you about Owens Lake. Owens Lake, how much money is being, how much water is being diverted to Owens Lake? Hold my time, Julie, please.
At the present time, about 68,000 acre feet.
And what's that mean to Los Angeles?
Well, 68,000 acre feet, it's enough water for about 140,000 households.
And what if we get into a phase? Do we recall that water to Los Angeles?
No. We have environmental responsibilities and.
But what about if the people need the water here?
Well.
I mean, there should be something in the phase that if it gets to be a problem, we say to the people of Keighley and the 67 homes that we're going to take the water for the month of August. What if this heat goes on for days and days and we need the water?
I was up there just last week, council member, in discussions with the supervisors and other stakeholders about exactly this kind of issue. But I don't want to prejudge it at this point as, but we're talking about it and we're having an Inyo County LA City Standing Committee meeting coming up, I believe, in the next few days.
Oh, because I think it's important. If we're in a crisis, we need their help. We want to help that as well. I also wanted to say too, from a citywide standpoint, figuring out what Ms. Hahn said, and not to be competitive, but to be informative. Because I remember when my parents told me about the challenges of certain times in their lives. Let's say everybody in a zip code had a percentage of what they're doing to meet your goals. So we got the citywide campaign involved where people said, and people in 9004 are cutting their water by 21% and 90069 needs to cut it more, and 9039, which I live in. I think it would be spirited. But you got to figure out so it's not one side of the town against the other. But together, we're doing this for the right thing. I think you have to engage in the people in some way in promoting that as well. Let me ask you, can you take a bucket, a five-gallon bucket of water and throw it over a hard surface, or is that a violation?
That would be, you can wash down your driveway providing you have a shut-off nozzle.
Shut-off nozzle.
It's not a shut-off nozzle.
Okay. Because not everybody gets street cleaning. So they want to have their streets cleaned on that as well. I think it's real important. And I think it's important what you said about recreation and parks and their cooperation in working. I do have a question, though. Why did you pick Monday, Thursday or Saturday? Because some people on Saturday can't do things that they could do on Sunday.
Yes. But let's remember, we have the water conservation team that's out, you know, in the city. We have to have certainty of enforcement. So if anybody can just choose any two days that they want, how would we ever know to be able to enforce the ordinance? So if provide certainty.
You look at their meters. You have a computer up there at the John Forall Building. You look at their meters and you say, oh, you could go to my address and you see if I'm using the water right or not. I'm just saying like today, here's the situation. You had a hot day Sunday, Monday and Tuesday. And let's say you weren't supposed to, you know, maybe you need to water twice in a day today because of the, I'm not a botanist, but I think it should be looked at in that sense to see if it could be relieved if there's a stretch of period of time. They should know how to be water-wise on that. Because I read this here and some of your ideas. And also, members, I think what we have to do, and it's not today, but it's in the future, Mr. Garcetti, I think we have to come up with a permanent change. with a permanent change. It's tough. I love water. I feel good when I make it home, and I water my garden. I feel good when I clean my wife's car. She feels good when I do, but I don't let her run down the street. I feel good when I used to, and I did get caught by a neighbor who sent an email, and they caught me on it. I clean my street because the sweeper doesn't come by. I like that. But I got to change my habits. I understand that. I'm confessing to you, like I would to my priest, you know, on that there. The head of Water and Power. But we also must develop a plan that is not a phase anymore, because we are going through a great change. If we want to do the right things in Owens Valley, if we want to do the right things all the way through the aqueduct, we have to change our ways and, and look at it. I just want to be balanced, so I think there's some future thinking. You asked for a committee on this, didn't you, Ms. Hahn? Yeah, tell us a little about that right now, please, would you?
Green.
A green, blue-ribbon committee that would look at green issues and water issues that would make sense. My time is expired, but not my passion for water and power. Thank you very much, Mr. Nahal.
Thank you, thank you. And we're, 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 I'm in full agreement with the appointment of this committee to take a look at our, our, our water rates. And by the way, the, the outdoor watering is about sprinkler use. It doesn't prohibit hand-watering for those people who have special plants that have special needs. So-
Thank you. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Labange, you are absolved, so. I had to throw that in with your comments. Um, restrictive water use. You mentioned Phase Three. When you get to Phase Four, and Phase Five, and Phase Six, people don't have to worry about their landscaping, because you can't water your landscaping anymore. So they're concerned about landscaping now. When it gets to Phase, uh, Five, well, when it gets to Phase Four, no filling of residential swimming pools and spas with potable water? And then Phase Five, no landscaping. So you can't water your lawn? You can't water your rosebush? You can't water anything outside?
Well, you know, our hope is that by invoking Phase Three at this point, together with the shortage year rates, together with the, with the outreach campaign and the education of the public, that we won't have to get there. But if, if, if the water situation worsens to such an extent that we have to invoke those additional phases, then we'll have to sit down and talk about it. But we're not there now.
I understand that. I'm just talking about additional phases. And then the other question is, those abusers, people who don't care, who say, I'll pay for the additional water because I can afford it, is there any type of restriction that can be imposed upon individuals that don't want to reduce 15 percent, that want to increase it 15 percent? In addition to the financial consideration, which doesn't create more water, is there any type of restriction that can be imposed where the allocation of water to that particular location can be restricted?
Yeah, there is, but it, but it goes up, in order to be absolutely fair to, to the citizens, it goes up in grades. In other words, first violation under the Water Conservation Ordinance is only a warning. Second violation on the, on the, on the city side is a fine. Third is a greater fine. Fourth is a greater fine. At the fifth level, with somebody who's truly recalcitrant and will not change their ways, there is the ability under the ordinance, as approved by this council, to, to actually, uh, install a flow restrictor at the property. Again, you know, what we're finding is that, that of the 2,800 citations, only 50 of them have to go to a second level.
But that's what I'm saying. There are those individuals, and I'm not saying there's a lot of them, there are those individuals that say, I don't care, I'm going to pay for it, and as much as I need, that I'm going to pay. It's not the majority, but clearly there has to be something for those that flaunt it, that water seven days a week, that just don't care. I mean, that's the concern I have. Most people, I think, will comply, but those that don't, ultimately, there's a restriction. So we say a governor on the, the inlet that will restrict the flow of water, and maybe that'll get their attention.
There is, there is. Ultimately, this ordinance gives the rest of us the right to restrict water flow to that particular individual.
Okay, and while I didn't support the last time you were here, I am going to support this, and I also want to say, I went on the website, the Water and Power website. They say nothing's going to be posted until May 1st. That new ordinance kicks in June 1st. We need to get that posted as quickly as possible so people can know what level they're at, so they'll be able to adjust accordingly. But according to the website, nothing's going to take effect until May 1st. That doesn't give people a lot of time to adjust.
But, but, but the call center will respond to those questions already. And I, and I asked for how many calls we'd received after the last time that, that I was here with you, um, and was told that, uh, that there was something like 4,000 calls that had come in.
I guess people are watching Channel 35.
It's a very popular channel. I'm sure they tune-
For the Insomniacs at 3 o'clock in the morning.
No, so, so really, I mean, it is having an effect. People are calling in. They want to know what their, what their, uh, what their tiers are. And, and also, even by calling, we will be installing an automatic, um, device, so that, so that they'll be able to, to enter their membership number-
Okay.
And automatically get their Tier One allowance. So that's getting put in place.
And I think most people really want to conserve. They understand the drought. They understand conservation, and we appreciate that. But there's always those that disregard, and those are the people that obviously these additional restrictions have to apply to, but not the majority of the folks that we've got. But when it comes to the additional phases, the swimming pools, uh, the vegetation, if we get to that point, we're really going to be in sad shape.
Yes.
And God forbid we have a fire. Uh, the water that we have to use to put out a fire comes from the water that we use in our residents also-
Yes.
To keep Los Angeles going.
Yes.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosenoff.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, we do a lot of things in this council floor that people don't know what's going on, but this is very important. It impacts everybody out there who's watching this, and everybody who has the pleasure of having an opportunity to water their lawns, or even have a lawn to begin with. This new policy, going into effect and voted by our council today, specifically, what does it change? Just to two days a week, you can use, explain it real quickly.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Just help us.
The, the other prohibitions that are in place under Phase One remain. The only change is that outdoor sprinkler use will be restricted to two days a week.
Okay, so if I'm not sprinkling, my nephew Chris has planted some wonderful tomato bushes and some other plants that he waters. If he handwaters them, he can do it before 9 o'clock and after 4 o'clock.
That's correct. But he can handwater them every day of the week. Handwatering is not the issue. People are, people are quite frugal in their use of water when they hand, it's the sprinklers that are the problem.
Okay, so now I hire my gardener. I don't have a gardener, but if a gardener comes in and he starts doing his work during the day, he can water and do all these kinds of things, but he can't turn the sprinklers on?
That's right. I, I mean, I hope, I hope your gardener would also be conservative, because remember, there are also the shortage year rates.
Right.
So you don't, you don't want to stray up into the, up into the top 15 percent of Tier One.
Right, but you don't want the gardener to be watering between 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM. That's against the law, correct?
That's correct.
So everybody got to tell their gardener, when they come in in the day, to do their stuff, they cannot be watering from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM?
Right. Do it before 9:00, do it after 4:00.
Okay. I don't think anybody knows that out there, because every time I get up and I got going, I see all the gardeners out there. Everybody's watering, everybody's doing their thing. It's after 9 o'clock, and it's before 4 o'clock.
Okay, we, we have to, we have to get, we have to get the message out.
Are you going to get the message out to all of these businesses that have gardeners? So these guys who are doing it don't get nailed, but their bosses understand they can't be watering from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM?
Right, okay.
No one can be watering by hand from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. But before 9:00 and after 4:00, I think that is very significant. People need to know that. And secondly, I know my time is running out. When we get our bill, our next bill, I mean, I'm a simpleton. I get so much crap in the mail. I'm tearing it all up. I don't even look at the stuff. Will it be something that will pop out at me in my DWP bill that will say, oh, my God, I should not be doing any watering from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM?
Um, you, you will get a bill insert.
Okay.
There'll be an insert with your bill that will explain all of this.
It'd be real simple?
Be as simple as we can make it.
Okay, all right. And the reason is, listen, folks, I mean, we've had, yesterday, the hottest day on record for that day since time has been. I mean, it was 98 degrees on the beach. So we are really into it already in April, aren't we?
We are, and, and it may be that, that, that we're actually seeing the effects of climate change in Los Angeles.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, climate change means, on the power side, we have to adapt the DWP not to contribute in terms of greenhouse gas emissions. On the water side, it means that we have to adapt in order, in order to deal with a changing reality. This is what we're trying to do here.
All right, now, if I was living where I have this beautiful place to garden, it's called Ocean View Farms, which is a DWP lot over there on Centinela. And if I have a plot, I can't water between 9:00 and 4:00. I have to get up there before 9:00 in the morning and after 4:00 in the afternoon.
Um, that's, that's right.
So everybody has to realize they have to manage their whole notion of watering differently.
Right. And I think, I think everybody also has to realize that even in Tier One, water is not a free commodity. But every drop that is going down the drain is money that, that is being spent by that person. I think, I think if we can also make this thought stick, that, that, you know, that water used equals money spent, that would be a good, because when we're telling people, cut back to only two days a week, we're also telling them that they're, that they're going to be saving money by doing that.
Yeah.
It isn't just something that they're, that they're doing for society.
Right.
Something that they're doing for themselves as well.
Yeah. Now, what is, what would Phase Four be or Phase Five?
Then, then we'll, that's okay, go ahead. We can get the answer to that question, and then Mr. Cardness will be next.
But, I mean, Phase Four has, has additional restrictions. I think Councilmember Zine was, was talking about, about them. It's my fervent hope that we won't need to go beyond Phase Three.
Okay.
That's, that's why we want to do-
Thank you. I hope I hear that, but you're going to have to keep us in the loop, obviously. Thank you.
Well, of course, and we've, we've agreed to, to provide quarterly reports to the council on what the water situation is, so that if we see relief in sight, and, and it's, it's the mayor's and the council's desire to pull things back, and our commission, so that we can do that quickly. I mean, this is not intended to, to be punitive. This, this is intended to get us all through a crisis that we all share in.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Cardness, Ms. Perry, Ms. Hahn, and Mr. Labange for second times.
Call for the question.
Is there any objection to calling the question?
I have an objection, but less suggestion.
All right, hold on, wait. You can't, you can't say why, but you can only object. Hold on, you can only object, which means that you vote on it. So please, you might want to go to your seat, Mr. Labange, if you want to vote no on that. Um, we'll wait for you to come around.
Will you post every nursery store in Southern California to vote? Go ahead.
All right. We, we can only vote on, we can only vote on what's before. So this is to end debate. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
Okay, that fails. It needed 10 for, um, because everybody hasn't spoken for a second time. Um, Ms. Perry is our next speaker.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Nahal, I, I just wanted to ask you and to make a suggestion. Um, can you incorporate Channel 35 into your outreach?
Yes.
And then, do you need a budget for that, or, because these are public service announcements, is that something that you can do with minimal, minimal cost?
Uh, I'll, I'll speak with our public affairs-
All right. Would you do that? Because sometimes it's easier for people to visualize, uh, rather than to try to understand their bills even. Some people are visual, some people are, do better with reading things, but, um, I just want to make that suggestion. That's all I had to say, because we vetted it in committee this morning.
Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Oh, it failed.
Yeah, it failed. It needed 10 votes, because you hadn't spoken for, after, everybody's spoken for two times, it's an eight vote, but before that, it's a 10 vote.
Um, okay. Basically, I was just going to ask you, where are we trying to get to with, um, the, the water shortage rates and Phase Three? What, are we trying to get to 15 percent?
We're trying to get to 15 percent.
And is it your opinion that this will put us at 15 percent, Phase Three?
It is my hope that we'll get to 15 percent.
So what, we, we've reduced 6 percent so far with Phase One, or 5 percent?
Across the city, 5.
Right, 5 percent. And you're expecting this to give us another 10 percent?
Well, remember, even Phase One, this is, this is an ongoing thing. It's not as if we opened Phase One, and then we closed it, and it's not happening. We're continuing to educate people. We've recently doubled the, um, the number of people on the water conservation team. We have to take these additional steps in order to get to the 15 percent. But I, I don't think, I don't think anybody could sit down and give some kind of a, of a guarantee or a prediction.
It's not a guarantee, but I, you know, I think you should try to get more into, into real numbers of what you expect each of these phases to accomplish. I think that's important.
The water shortage, the water shortage year rates that were adopted by the council last week say on their face that what it's intended to accomplish is a 15 percent.
I think that's, I, I think that's important. And I think the public would have liked to have known after Phase One, if we don't achieve this, then we're going to go to Phase Two. If we don't achieve that, then we're going to go to Phase Three, because again, I think people are concerned about their landscaping, particularly in, in hot weather. Uh, so, but it, it needs to be, hey, we're all a part of this, and we didn't achieve our goals in Phase One, so that's why we're going to Phase Two. I still think we should have done a Phase Two, uh, you know, probably last fall. Uh, and, and my question on Phase Three, apparently, a board adopted Phase Three and sent a recommendation to the mayor in February. Why are we, why are we here a couple months later? Um, why didn't we enact it sooner?
Well, that's, that's not a question that I can, that I can answer. It went to the mayor's office, and then the mayor forwarded, forwarded it to the council.
Is there something from the mayor's staff that could tell us why it languished for a couple months, particularly when we're in this kind of a water shortage? Do we? And, and this is different than other recommendations from, is this a different part of this ordinance, that it goes to the mayor's office first and then comes to the council?
Um, my understanding is that the, the recommendation, uh, excuse me, Mel Pascal and the Acting Deputy Mayor for Energy and Environment. Our understanding is that the mayor requested the, the department to offer up a recommendation as to moving to, to Phase Three. The recommendation then gets, um, made to us, letter to council for council consideration.
Why was there, like, a, over two months left here?
One of, one of the key issues-
Particularly when it's a very, it's more than an emergency.
Exactly. It's quite a, and, and the mayor, we, we considered it very carefully. If you recall, during that, during the latter part of February and the early part of March, we received a tremendous amount of rain. There was, there was a period there when we had significant rainfall for Los Angeles during that particular period of time. We wanted to make sure that the decision that we were going to make, moving into Phase Three, was mindful of any potential impact that that rain may have had on, on our, on our water supply. And, and given the, the analysis, once the rain had ended, it, the, the analysis was that it did not meet, it did not increase the, the water supply that folks may have thought. If you, if you do remember, there was periods of consecutive days when we had rain. And so we wanted to then think through all of the, the other issues that-
So the mayor was sitting there in his office trying to figure out how much rain we've had, and what not, that-
No, 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 no. It was during the, during the, no.
Warranted whether or not we wanted to finish.
No, it was during, it was during that period, because it was, it was certainly a period of climate-
You have deputy mayor for weather?
No, it was, no, there was during that time where it could, it could have had a potential impact on the water supply that we had coming into Los Angeles. But the analysis that had come back in conversations with the experts at DWP-
Yeah, colleagues, I find that to be problematic, frankly, and it might be something we want to look at to mend this ordinance. In fact, I'd like to put that in as a, as a potential amendment.
We can only vote this up or down, like-
Okay, all right, then, for, in the future-
But we can make suggestions during the motion.
In the future, colleagues, I think particularly during this very difficult water shortage crisis that we are in, if our Board of Water and Power makes a recommendation that we need to go into the next phase, I think that comes to the council, um, as well as the mayor, uh, so that, uh, you know, we have, uh, the, the ability to make that policy decision. And again, particularly when the mayor has sat on that for two months, and then we move right into raising people's rates, uh, if they, if they don't conserve water, uh, you know, I think that, that was sort of, one hand didn't know what the other hand was doing. I'd like to see in the future, that recommendation from the, the Board of Water and Power Commissioners come to the council, particularly on this issue of moving from, uh, emergency matters, moving from Phase One to Phase Two, Phase Three, Four, that, we're, our constituents are impacted by this, colleagues. And this is something I, I don't like having the mayor, uh, kind of determining how much rain we've had and whether or not that warrants us moving into this phase. Thank you.
Um, allow me just two observations, if I might. First, let's not forget, we have an ordinance that's in place. It's an ordinance this council adopted. And first, that ordinance provides, you go to Phase One, then you go to Phase Two, then you go to Phase Three.
Right.
So this path is actually laid out in there, and, and so is the track for how it gets to, to, to the council.
And I think it's a problem.
But, but the other thing that I would, I would, I would plead with you about is, we shouldn't characterize shortage year rates as raising people's rates. It does not do that. It does not do that. What it does is, it lowers the upper limit of Tier One by 15 percent, and if, and those who are already conserving by 15 percent, or those who are in that upper limit and bring their use down a little bit, won't see an increase in, in their rates. It's very, very important that we don't call this raising people's rates. That's not what it's intended to do. It's a revenue-neutral measure that is intended to induce conservation.
But people will pay more if they don't conserve?
No.
So no one will pay more?
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. No, no, no. Let me, let me be clear.
Will anybody pay more?
Let me answer the question.
Okay.
Okay? And I've explained this a number of times. It seems to me that, that perhaps we're not connecting. I'll, I'll try again. We each have a Tier One and a Tier Two.
I know.
What the shortage year rate does is that it brings down the upper limit of Tier One by 15 percent.
Right.
So for instance, if you're already not in that 15 percent level, you won't have to do anything.
Right.
However, if you're already using in the upper limit of your Tier One, or you're in your Tier Two, and you don't conserve, then yes.
Yes.
Your rates will go up.
Right, thank you. So we are raising some people's rates.
Mr. Weston is our next speaker.
Call a question?
All right, take two. We've got, is there an objection, is there an objection?
Question.
The, we can't, we can't debate. I'm sorry, uh, so, we'll open the roll on, um, and we can't, and just so folks know, we can't amend. We can only vote up or down. So any suggestions, you can either make them, Mr. High, or introduce as a separate motion. So, um, open the roll on, on the motion. This is not the, the action. This is just on ending debate. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That passes unanimously. Mr. Zine votes against himself there, just for the record, even though he wanted to speak for a second time. Um, and with that, let's go ahead. We have the proposal before us. So colleagues, this is the vote on the substance of the matter. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Um, next item, please.
Item 18 was called special by Councilmember Rosenoff for an amending motion that has been circulated.
Mr. Rosenoff, item number 18.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, can we ask the city attorney, uh, to the table, and can we also ask, um, staff, all staff to come, Bill Kessler, Michelle Davis, and David Hernano? Uh, colleagues, as you know, film LA and, and all of our entertainment industry issues are very significant to us. We consider ourselves the entertainment capital of the planet. We have been losing runaway productions to 40 states and throughout the world. Uh, last weekend, I went to Santa Monica Civic Auditorium, where I saw the location managers from all over the globe trying to steal business from Los Angeles, and we don't want to lose our business here. In fact, some of us believe we need to have a czar or an ombudsman, or some focus on the entertainment industry, uh, in a more dramatic way than we're doing here. Just to give you a background, in the summer of 2007, the city issued a request for information, seeking advice and information from interested firms to provide input to the city staff. There were many, many responses to the RFI. Following that, the city attorney, CAO, were directed to draft a request for proposals for filming services. The CEO drafted an RFP, which was first heard in Public Works in 2007, November. The committee and members of Public objected to the bulk of the draft, and the committee instructed the RFP to be redone with increased public input. As you know, the draft RFP has been with Public Works numerous times since 2007. The document before us today has again been significantly redrafted. The document before you today is a request for proposals, not a contract. The document provides guidelines for contractors as we look for feedback in performing their service. The contractor may propose something that deviates from this document, and that is okay. The city staff working on this knows they are not the film experts, and we look to the industry for their best proposals as to how these services will be performed. Throughout the entire process, I have heard from many residents, industry leaders, location managers, and other stakeholders. I want you to know that we have heard your issues loud and clear, and we look forward to a continued, open-door working relationships with you all. The RFP is a great starting point for all of that. We had it in committee last week, and I want to thank Mr. Greg Smith for his thoughtful questions, his interaction, and we voted it out of committee to bring it before the full council for action today. Would you enlarge a little bit on this, what we have before us?
Kate.
Hold my time.
Michelle Davis, CAO's office. Um, you did a great job giving some background, but just to expound a little bit, um, we have brought, you know, several drafts before committee, and the drafts, we believe, um, reflect a balance of the needs of the city, which include the entertainment industry, city residents, businesses, and city departments. We're seeking proposals for a contractor that will be flexible and dynamic enough to perform the core duties over an extended period of time despite the changes in specific city enforcement policies. With your approval today, the C.A.O. and the CLA anticipate the ability to release the RFP on May 1st, having responses submitted by July 8th, and making recommendations to council no later than September 9th.
Very good. Do we have public comment cards, Madam President? This is item 18.
We do have a two... A one.
I would suggest that we let that person speak, and then my colleagues after that, if that's okay.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh?
I'm Sarah Walsh. I'm here today on behalf of the Motion Picture Association of America and our member companies, Disney, Fox, NBC Universal, Paramount, Sony Pictures, and Warner Brothers. And I'm here to support the passage of the RFP for film permit services. I just wanted to thank the CLA and the C.A.O., and the members of the Public Works Committee, Councilmembers Rosendahl, Smith, and Alarcon, who really had a willingness to make the development of this RFP a collaborative effort, and we really do appreciate that. While the RFP is not perfect, it's certainly much improved from the original draft in the fall of 2007, as you mentioned, and we hope that some of the outstanding issues with the RFP will be resolved and addressed when the bidding process gets underway. But we believe that this is an RFP that addresses the needs of the city and the industry and the communities in the city that are affected by filming. So, thank you.
Great, and thank you. Just one more question for staff. What is our timeframe on this? Assuming the council approves it today, what are the next steps? When would an RFP be issued, and so on and so forth?
The short timeline is that we would expect to have responses due July 8th, and then make a recommendation by September 9th.
Very good. Thank you, colleagues, and I look for unanimous support, so we can finally go forward with a good RFP that has had the input from everybody who's interested in this issue, and it will have a positive impact on keeping the industry in our great city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, congratulations to you and your staff on extraordinarily hard work on this. And I know whenever we touch anything on filming, it makes people scared that in the communities, it's going to get worse, or in the business, it's going to get worse. This is a really good RFP, and I want to thank our staff that's worked on this as well, because what we put forward is something that I believe will make filming more neighborhood-friendly, but also easier in this city. I mean, those are the two things we want. We want there to be better communication. People want to be able to support filming, and we want to keep filming here. And since we've been talking about this, and I know we're not looking at the larger, the Ugly Betty motion today and stuff, but I've gotten so many calls from folks in the industry, and they're buzzing about what you're doing, what we're doing, and I can't speak to the specifics, but there are people who want to come back to Los Angeles and are working hard at coming back to Los Angeles. I think one of the ways we're going to be able to do that is by having the finest film permitting process anywhere in the country. This is a big step forward. I want to thank folks who have been part of this from both the neighborhood side as well as inside the entertainment industry. I know there was a little bit of folks that were worried from an earlier draft, and that's not what we're passing here today. But it speaks volumes about your leadership, Mr. Rosendahl, and obviously, you represent a lot of folks who are very closely tied to this industry, as do I. Mine are kind of the grips and the lighters and the florists and others, but they're very excited to see this move forward. It doesn't guarantee it going to anybody. Film LA has certainly been doing, you know, with their piece with the old contract, but whether it's Film LA or somebody else who steps forward, this will ensure that neighborhoods have some recourse, but not at the expense of driving the industry away. And for that, arise in full support. I appreciate you bringing up the Films-Ar piece as well. I know the mayor's office and our office are working very closely on that, and you know, whether we structure that inside mayor's office or outside the mayor's office, I'm open to... I just want somebody who's empowered and accountable, who can help our great staff work on those issues from both the community perspective and troubleshoot both legislation and those permitting issues on the streets of L.A. So with that, this is going to be an important step forward for filming here in Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I just wanted to say again, this is important to just go forward and strike the balance between the ability for film companies in L.A. to get permitted quickly, expeditiously, and so that we can do everything we can to remove some of the obstacles that we've been hearing about for film companies. Can you tell me just briefly what in this RFP will kind of speaks to that idea of the streamlining of the permitting, and what speaks to the balance side, which is communication with neighborhoods and an ability to have input from neighborhoods on the impact that sometimes filming does have in their neighborhoods? Everything from notification to who to call during the film shoot if there's issues. Can you just kind of tell us what's in the RFP specifically on those two issues?
Sure. Some things that are in the current contract, we do have within the RFP some certain service levels and expectations that are laid out specifically for the contractor to, you know, protect some of the interests of the community for notification requirements and so forth. But on your end, about industry, there is some language in the RFP, you know, definitely that we're looking for a contractor who is going to look out for their needs. But I think what's most more directly is going to address those is part of the CLA's report that you guys, that you approved recently to move forward with. One of the recommendations included the City Film Task Force. We're actually kicking off and having our first meeting today at 2:00, and so we expect, I mean, much of that, it is to focus on, you know, emerging policy issues and filming, and ways to streamline, you know, city government, how we do things, and how we facilitate filming in the city.
Good. Well, again, filming is such an important part of our city and certainly the other economies that benefit from that. Today, I was going to give a shout out to CSI Miami, I guess, is filming in San Pedro, and everyone's all excited about that. I was going to take an opportunity to drop by and thank them for choosing San Pedro to film, and hopefully, everything worked well for them. But I also know that as many of us as are excited about filming, sometimes our office gets calls if they felt that they weren't notified properly, or there were some inconveniences that they had no recourse again. So we've got to strike a balance between certainly nurturing this industry and also protecting quality lives for neighborhoods where the filming does take place. But today, we're glad CSI Miami is in San Pedro. Thank you.
Ms. Grue, and then Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Bill, for your leadership on this, because I don't want to remember how long we've been working on this, David. It's been a long time, four years, okay. I saw that, four. And colleagues, if you may recall, this was the outgrowth of the old version of EIDC to the establishment of Film LA, and I think a very big change in our relationship there and the importance of that. This is the first time we're actually going out to bid. And the history is that many, many years ago, it was located in the mayor's office, and this is during the Reardon years, and it was thought to have a separate, private kind of entity to be able to operate. It was a hybrid in the instance. And the idea was, how can we move more expeditiously and quickly, have a center in which we could operate? And I think what we have before us, and a lot of the machinations back and forth, and a lot of experiences, even in this last four years, has allowed us to come with, I think, an RFP that tried to address a lot of the concerns, because we do know that the entertainment industry is so critical. And this is the first year... I've served on the California Film Commission for many years, and we fought for state legislation to increase or encourage, provide the kind of tax incentives that we see in every state in this country except for the state of California, because for some reason, we think we don't have to do this, the people stay here. But it is the bottom line. And so this state legislation that was passed, albeit not perfect, is definitely a step in the right direction, and we hope that with the efforts we're providing here and with Film LA or some other organization, and the response of this RFP is going to demonstrate to the studios how important it is. Because as someone who worked for DreamWorks for four and a half years, the bottom line for them is what is easy, what is accessible, and most times what is more, you know, are cheaper, less expensive. But in most instances as well, they would pay a little bit more to be in California and to be in Los Angeles. Not a lot more, but a little bit more. And we've seen, whether it be the writer's strike, or the Screen Actors Guild strike, whatever it may be, it has a great impact and a domino effect. And we have to do everything we can to keep those jobs here. And this RFP moving forward, I know we're going beyond the RFP, but I think it is symbolic of what, of the attention we need to focus on, and then Mr. Garcetti pushing forward that Films-Ar, and the mayor, and all of us, because it is important. Because when you go to another city in the United States, oftentimes, someone meets you at the airport and takes you around to the locations they like to see. This is about keeping the industry here. As I like to say frequently, New York would not let Wall Street leave. We cannot in Los Angeles let Hollywood leave in the entertainment industry. So I look forward to this getting out. Maybe the long term, four years, gets us a more perfect document going out for this... Right, David? Isn't that it? Four years? Okay. The perfect document. I think it is our opportunity to get the ball moving again. Did you want to say something, David? You said... No. Okay.
You just wanted to confirm your numbers were correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Resident.
Ms. Perry, Mr. Labange, and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. As one who represents an area that has heavy, heavy filming and a huge influx of residents who didn't live there maybe 10 years ago, you know, it's often been a source of conflict between working and sleeping. And I think that I'm pleased that the RFP is about to be issued. I think the competitive process is a good one, and the drafting of the language today has been very meticulous and well thought out, and I think that it'll be a good process to see what we get back and make some decisions so as we move forward to accommodate not only the new residents who live and work in downtown, many of whom are living down in downtown Los Angeles, also work in the industry, and so they're not unfriendly to the industry. This is going to go a long, long way, the level playing field, to letting film companies know what a neighborhood is all about when they enter into the community, and will give us some long-term ability to plan, to perhaps build infrastructure, to be welcoming, and yet again, understand that people live in communities. So thank you very much for all your hard work.
Mr. Labange.
Just want to say thank you. I hope we get the right opportunity to make it easy to balance the needs of neighborhoods, as Ms. Perry just spoke of, as neighborhood chains, but also get people working. There's 250,000 Southern Californians, Angelinos, who are directly related to this industry, and we got to make it easy. And I'm glad to hear that we were at the convention last week in Santa Monica, where they had the commissions all around, that we were there at a table with the State Commission to save film in L.A. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, colleagues, for your comments, and again, thank you, staff, for your work. First, I want to single out Laura McClellan, my deputy chief of staff, for her overall coordinating leadership and getting all the parties together. Thank you, Laura, very much. I also want to thank Jim Horowitz, who's in the field, who knows how to stir up energy, and that complemented getting every issue out on the floor, which needed to be. But it was Laura's overall guidance and leadership that put us in this spot today. Colleagues, you're right. We have to find the right balance, the balance between the community and the industry, but we don't want to lose the industry. And, Mr. President, I appreciate your comment about working with the mayor's office on either a czar or some central point where we can focus on this, so we don't lose any more industry. When I went to that conference, that convention, and saw all those location managers from all over the world, it really made me wanting to be more competitive so we can keep them here. And I just want to say on that note, this afternoon at 2:00, the City Film Task Force will have its first meeting, which I'd like you to explain what that is, at 2:00 P.M., and it'll be the C.A.O., the 15th floor, City Hall East. What is this task force about?
It is to, you know, focus on emerging film-related issues, including trying to streamline some of our departmental operations to better facilitate filming.
Very good. So once again, folks, this afternoon at 2:00, 15th floor, City Hall East, for the first meeting of the City Film Task Force, which is being created to bring everybody together and to stay focused on it. With that in mind, Mr. President, I ask for an I-vote.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rosendahl. And with that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Send that forthwith to the mayor, without objection. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 25 was called special...
I think what we're going to do is continue that, colleagues, so we'll have 12 members tomorrow. It would just go over as an ordinance anyways for a week, but we'll have 12 members tomorrow, so we can do that. Okay? Is there any objection?
And forthwith.
Sorry?
Ten forthwith. There's been a request.
Ten forthwith, absolutely. Without objection. Thirty-one forthwith? All right, without objection. And let's go ahead and continue item 25 for one day. Next item, please.
Item 32 called special for cards.
Okay. Item 32, Dr. Williams. Is he still here? Dr. Clyde Williams? Arnold Sacks? Do not see either of them here. We'll close the public hearing. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 34 called special for cards.
Dr. Williams, again. Do not see him here. We'll close the public hearing. If we can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 35 called special for cards.
Miriam Fogler in Van Nuys. Is Ms. Fogler there? All right. Trying to see if anybody's there still in Van Nuys. Nope. Okay. We'll close the public hearing then on that item. Go ahead, prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 39 called special for cards.
And Mr. Sacks. Do not see him here. And is Ms. Pearman out in Van Nuys? We have nobody in Van Nuys, right? And Ms. Fogler as well? Think they've left as well? Okay. We'll close the hearing on that, and please prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zion requests to be excused to leave at 11:50 on Friday, April 24th, for city business, and for the entire meeting of November 20th for personal business. Both meet council policy.
All right, Mr. Zion is excused.
Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused Friday, April 24th, for city business. That meets council policy.
All right, he is excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused May 19th and 20th for personal business. That meets council policy.
All right, he is excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, May 8th, and to leave at 11:30 on Friday, June 19th. Both for city business, and both meet council policy.
She is excused.
And Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, May 29th, Tuesday, June 2nd, and Wednesday, June 3rd, for personal business. A motion is required for the 29th.
All right. We will move that. If there's no objection, go ahead and grant that excuse.
That would clear the desk.
Okay, any announcements, colleagues? Do we have any adjourning motions today? Anybody with adjourning motions? Yes, if I can ask everybody, please rise in council chambers for our adjourning motions. Ms. Grue. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Labange.